Good evening and welcome to the City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission Meeting of February 4, 2013. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Will the Clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Here.
Commissioner Tapking?
Here.
Commissioner Turpell?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
There.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. If you'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, you can fill out a card and you'll have five minutes to speak. I have one card this evening for Mr. Nick Kidway. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and city of residence, and good evening to you.
I begin with the name of God who's most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Iqbal Kidway. Last time I checked, Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks since 1993, Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners. Thank you for providing this opportunity to talk. I would like to start by saying that I appreciate a Planning Commissioner's comments at one of the meetings regarding the dilution of the speaker cards that I've spoken about. But one of the things that did not come through was that since the system has been set up so that it's a great system and you get five minutes if there's five speakers or less, if you have a six-speaker, four minutes for everyone. If you have 15 speakers, there's three minutes. But once you have 16 speakers, it goes down to two minutes, which I think is completely, I mean, should be abolished. It should be three minutes maximum, minimum. But what a lot of the special interests do, because they know about this rule, is that they have architects and several people here that they bring over, and they put seven or eight of these people for questions only. And then that is counted along with the citizens. So you may have eight paid people and you have three citizens that are speaking, and all of a sudden the time is three minutes because of this thing. And this has been going on for so long, and smart people like you that really care about the community should do something about it, should be not people like me who are speaking up on this. In fact, if you have listened to the Supreme Court hearings, which is not that often, and if you go to court also unfortunately or fortunately, the justice system gives equal time to each, and whoever has more time has a higher leverage. And that's why the Supreme Court gives half an hour to each side. And most of the time we find that the staff is for the applicant or the position because they have ironed it out. So when you add the staff time, you add the 15 minutes for the applicant. You don't allow people like me anymore to have more than three minutes because homeowners associations, et cetera, are not allowed. So the citizens are only allowed so few times. And then you wonder why are there empty seats? Because people know that we have a rubber stamp now. We don't have democracy anymore. We don't have a republican form of government. And that brings me to my main point. Tomorrow, finally, after a long time, Commissioner Price took me up on my complaints that the minutes that you have are un-American, in that they do not give a true picture as to what transpired at the meetings. And I've learned this basically from coming here since 1992. And the minutes used to reflect what happened. And it's on the agenda tomorrow. One of the few good things that came out of the report by the city clerk is that we have the wonderful video now available. So in lieu of the printed page, you just put a link. And in fact, Moore Park has gone to that extent because I checked on the minutes and Moore Park, they had a public hearing, and there were seven speakers, and it just had a blue seven speakers. I said, "So they don't give their names anymore." Then I realized that's a hyperlink. So I clicked on it, and it goes to the video of that section. And, you know, I was trying to make a living, so I spent an hour doing the research, and I toggled back and forth to get the names. I could only get two names. And so this is basically a slap on democracy. And some people think that I'm the only one that cares about it. I think a lot of people care about it, but they don't understand what minutes are, what the value is. And in fact, I hope that, I don't like it, but somebody will go to court about this because minutes are legal documents of what happened. And if you play with them, which cities and counties are doing, and it has an unfair bearing on a case, I think the judges will frown on it and pay handsomely. If TOTV can show Mr. Malcolm X. picture, I'll appreciate that. I copied that because it's interesting that I am on the agenda, but there's one sentence, and it's, you know, pretty demeaning. I mean, what can be more demeaning than not naming somebody what his name is? My name is Iqbal. I use Nick for convenience. But the city clerk, she just says one individual. And forget being a Director of Concerned Citizens, there's no support for that. I hope there is some support. Some people will come tomorrow and speak on this issue. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Written comments, announcements, continuums, Mr. Towne?
I had done it this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to the public hearings. Will the Clerk please open Case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda items 6A regarding case HSG 2012-70310. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request: Study session on the draft update to the housing element of the general plan. Location: Citywide.
Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a few introductory comments before we began tonight's two study sessions. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the city's draft housing element and its conservation element. And tonight's discussion by the Commission and with public input is designed to basically get everybody familiar with the topics that we are dealing with in these two elements, and also to provide an early opportunity for feedback from the public and from the Commission itself. No action will be taken tonight by the Commission, no votes. So it's just an opportunity to slightly more, in a slightly more informal way, talk about the matter at hand. And then both of these elements will be coming back to the Planning Commission at a future date for a formal recommendation to the City Council, and then the City Council will make the final action on both. So with those introductory remarks, we have presentations by two members of the Community Development Department and also additional staff for the second item from the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. And Mr. Spector, if you'd like to give a report, good evening.
Good evening, Chair Reynolds and members of the Planning Commission. We're here tonight to discuss an update and obtain feedback on an upcoming update to the general plan housing element for the City of Thousand Oaks. And I'll just be providing as brief as I can an overview of the information that's contained in this housing element update, and then end with a brief discussion of the schedule we'll be taking. This housing element we are discussing tonight is one of seven elements of the general plan that are mandated by California law. And what's special about the housing element is the only general plan housing element, general plan element that must be updated on a regular schedule. This particular update covers 2014 through 2021. And another unique feature of the housing element is the element in its draft form and final form must be reviewed by the state agency, the Department of Housing and Community Development. This housing element update is, must be completed by October 15 of this year. Now, the, every single housing element throughout the state, all cities and all counties, has to contain a certain, certain specific pieces of information. And one of the main pieces of information has to do with housing needs. One of those pieces of information that's required has to do with population growth. And you can see by this table that between 1990 and 2000, the city grew by about 12% and growth is slowing down. In the decade of 2000 to 2010, we grew at a rate of 8%. Another interesting change in the household composition of the city has to do with the percentage of households that are family households versus single-person households. The percentage of households with children under 18 has gone down, and the percentage of households consisting of single people, people living alone, has gone up. And it went up from about 19% in 2000 to 21% today, excuse me, 19.6, almost 20% in We also look at the housing types within the city, and it's quite clear, and it's no mystery to everyone, that we're a community consisting primarily of single-family detached homes. We were in 2000 and we are today. What we mean by single-family detached, that's your conventional single-family home. Another type that we discuss is townhomes, apartments, they're for rent rather than for sale. And then the last category, mobile homes, in this case, a mobile home park. Another thing that's happening within the city based on the 2010 census is that the average age or the median age of the people in the city is increasing. Back in 2000, the median age was 37.7. Now we're at 41.5. Now, the next series of slides address the issue of housing affordability, which is really central to this housing element itself. There are other aspects, but that's a major theme. And any discussion about affordability has to begin with what the people make. And most people, their income is derived from employment. Now, this city has a fairly low unemployment rate, but it's also interesting, like actually most of the nation, there's a large percentage of people, in this case, 31% of our population that are in, that are aged to work are not in the labor force. So our unemployment rate is 6.4%, which is lower than the county overall. Now, one of the reasons, well, I should say, it's important to note that we have incomes in this town that are relatively high because so many people in Thousand Oaks enjoy high-paying jobs in management and in high-tech endeavors. And if you look at the median income according to the census or the American Community Survey, in Thousand Oaks, it was $98,000, this is household income, as opposed to $75,000 within the county itself. And you can see by this chart that there's a large percentage of the households in Thousand Oaks that earn $75,000 or more. In spite of that, median income being high, there's a large number of folks or households in Thousand Oaks that are overpaying. And what we mean by overpaying for housing at any rate, we're talking about people who spend 30% or more of their gross income on housing. Now renters, more so than owners, overpay. And the problem is most severe for those people making less than $50,000 a year. You can see in this chart that 90% of the renters that are overpaying are people who are overpaying and make less than $50,000 are renters, and 75% of the people who are overpaying and make that amount of income are overpaying. So it's just more severe, as any common sense would tell you, amongst people who make less. That's not to say that people who are making substantial incomes aren't also overpaying. Now, I should go back to the slide before and mention that this problem is pervasive and it also affects people's feelings of their ability to have a quality of life over time. For example, there was an online survey of residents in the ages of 45 to 64 years old, and they were surveyed by the senior adult master plan housing team. And 47% of those respondents said they would not or might not be able to have enough money after retirement to pay for their housing. Now affordability remains a problem within Thousand Oaks, even though there's a considerable number of people who receive some kind of housing subsidy or live in subsidized housing. We have over 1,000 affordable housing units in the city, managed for the most part by Area Housing Authority and Many Mansions. And there's 565, at a certain point in time in 2012, households that received Section 8 vouchers. That's, Section 8 is a federal program. And the next few slides give you some examples of affordable housing projects in Thousand Oaks. This one happens to be under construction. It's Hillcrest Apartments, aptly named. It's on Hillcrest Drive, and it's a project being developed by Many Mansions. Sunset Villas is an Area Housing Authority project east of Hampshire, south of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, second shot. hacienda de Feliz is a project that's operated by Many Mansions. And the Shadows Apartments is a project that's operated by a private party. And finally, Oak Creek Senior Villas, which is located on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I'd like to turn your attention to another item that's analyzed in the housing element and addresses the housing needs of persons with special needs. And what do we mean by that? A prime example has to do with the persons who are currently homeless, elderly persons, persons with disabilities. So we use the census and other sources of information to identify the number of persons within these categories. The analysis of persons with a special kind of disability, developmental disability, is a new requirement of housing element law. In 2012, there was a count of homeless population within the city, and they found 41 people on the street, and 41 on the street and 49 in some kind of shelter. One of the most controversial aspects of housing elements throughout the state, many people have heard about it, is the RENA allocation. RENA stands for Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And what it comes down to is every city and every county is given a target number of housing units that they must accommodate. And it starts at the state, it's then distributed to the regions, in this case, the Southern California Association of Governments region, and then the county, and then Thousand Oaks, and then it's further subdivided by income categories. Now, cities and counties are not required to actually build the housing, but they must have available land to allow that housing to be built. Now, these income categories are important because a city must have sites with appropriate density to accommodate the housing. And with respect to the very low, extremely low, low-income housing, that has to be at least 30 units per acre, unless the city can show that a lower density is possible for, to build that kind of housing. So this slide shows what the current RENA allocation is for this update, and on the top line, 192. But I need to point out that the law requires if there was any unmet need from the prior planning period of the previous housing element, it needs to be added to the RENA for this planning period. So you can see the total number of dwelling units there for this period would be 255 dwellings. Now, if we happen to rezone property at appropriate densities before this housing element update is due, we could lower that number. In other words, if we rezone a site to accommodate 63 units. Now, many people may wonder, what are we talking about by these categories of extremely low, very low, and low? And these designations are identified in California law, and it has to do with the percentage of the area median income for this county. In 2012, that was $89,300 per year. So if you do the math for, the income limits are shown on the right. Now, every housing element, including this one, has to include an inventory of sites where housing could be built. And that's broken down further by approved projects, sites that are developed but underdeveloped, and vacant land. This is an example of a property that falls within the category of approved. There's an Area Housing Authority project on Los Feliz Drive. This is a map. It may be a little bit hard to see on the screen, but it shows a scattering of vacant sites throughout the city that are considered suitable for development. So when we look at our inventory of land and we compare that to our RENA allocation, you can see in every category from lower to above moderate income, we have a surplus of land. Now, every housing element must also discuss financial resources that are available to assist with the housing, the development of housing, particularly affordable housing. We used to have, the primary source of funding was related to the redevelopment agency. And as most of the people here probably are aware, the state dissolved the redevelopment agency for Thousand Oaks and every city and county in 2012. agency for Thousand Oaks and every city and county in 2012, which means it's going to be much more difficult to fund affordable housing. There's also federal sources of money. Some of these programs may not build affordable housing, but they help people particularly with special needs. These include the Community Development Block Grants, Section 8 vouchers, tax credit financing. And then there's local sources of funds. One is the Social Services Endowment Fund, and we also have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And we're currently studying the possibility of resetting our fees that we charge for inclusionary housing in lieu -- it's kind of a tongue twister -- the affordable housing in lieu fee and the non-residential development linkage fee. And if we reset that fee and we have development that occurs and developers pay that fee, they'll be going into this trust fund that we can use in a similar fashion as the RDA, the redevelopment agency, although the dollar amounts are going to be much less. The housing element also includes analysis of constraints. Those include governmental constraints such as zoning, as well as nongovernmental constraints. The element includes an evaluation of the previous element with respect to the action plan. The action plan is basically a list of programs. And most of these were accomplished, for example, zoning for emergency shelters, incentives for building on small and underused lots, and revised parking standards. By accomplished, I mean we -- the Planning Commission reviewed and made a recommendation, and the City Council adopted an ordinance that made these changes. Now, there's a few objectives and programs that were not accomplished, and primarily because of the loss of RDA. The new housing action plan has 14 programs, and a number of them are just continuation of previous programs. For example, to assist agencies that help the elderly, the disabled, and homeless. We also are proposing a few new programs, one of which is to encourage our affordable housing partners to give a priority to the needs of persons with disabilities. And there's also two that are related to the Housing Trust Fund, to manage that trust fund and update the fees that would go into that fund. And this is just a brief summary of the schedule. We had a community meeting on November 8th. We took some input from residents then. And then we're here at this study session. And by the end of this month, we hope to submit a draft element to the state, and then have our first hearing in July, and hopefully to the City Council for adoption in September. In conclusion, we've completed most of what we set out to accomplish in the previous element. The city has enough land to meet its new regional housing need allocation. And then lastly, the loss of the redevelopment agency has eliminated the main source of funding for affordable housing, which makes the accomplishment of constructing new affordable housing more difficult than it was in the past. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions with staff? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. You had put up a slide about the statistics on overpayment in the community, and that's kind of a -- somebody has set a threshold that says if we pay more than 30% of their income for housing, that's considered overpayment. And so, let me see, that's Table 28 on page 28 of the packet has that figure. Those are for Thousand Oaks? I'm assuming they are because it lists households, but I didn't see where it actually said that. Do we happen to have any comparative figures on how that relates to the county, or the state, or nationwide? I mean, we're talking about there's a significant number of people overpaying for housing. Is that normal? Are we less than normal, greater than normal? Do you have a feel for it?
Yeah, I don't have a real good feel for it, but I would say, as a nation, we have much more difficulty. The incomes may be higher, but the housing costs are so much higher that I would say it's worse here. Throughout the state, I'd have to look it up. I don't know. It's not that hard to find using the -- this information came from the 2010 census.
Okay. It's just that in a lot of the other tables, we have comparative figures, at least with Ventura County, so that we can get an assessment of how Thousand Oaks relates to at least some other populations. And I just didn't see that in here. I would figure the rate of overpayment is not significantly different here than it would be elsewhere. Probably everybody's overpaying to squeeze into as much house as they can for what they can afford. But it would be nice if there's a way we could get a relative sense of how that is in the community. Because generally, these figures start getting used as the basis of policy differences. It would be good to know that. One last question would be on, and I'm trying to find it, in the draft housing element, is the discussion about mobile homes. I believe, page 75, 76, and 77. We talk about, it gives us a pretty good history about the city's adoption of the Mobile Home Park ordinance and kind of how that has progressed over the past several years. And what I want to, at least from my sense, the mobile home parks in the community do serve a valuable resource of providing one element of lower, more affordable housing in the community. And I want to be alert to see if we're doing everything to not allow that to get too quickly converted into condominiums or have someone else come in and, you know, take over the park and try to figure out how to get through the process so that they can updevelop it and move people out. Do we feel that the current ordinance structures with court rulings and such are sufficient to keep the mobile home parks alive in our community for a significant amount of time?
Well, as outlined in the housing element, there was a mediated settlement, if you will, where at least over the next 10 years, there are protections in place. There's a systematic increase in rent according to certain formulas. But part of that agreement is to not convert to for sale, you know, own your own lot, or not close a park for 10 years. Beyond that, it would have to be renegotiated.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Roundtree?
Question for, if you could turn to page 101 of your report. And for the people in the audience who are watching at home, what this really is, is a grid that shows the city's objective when it comes to new construction, conservation, or rehabilitation. And it talks about that the, I quote, "The objective for rehabilitation is set at zero because the dissolution of the Thousand Oaks Redevelopment Agency." I think what might be clear, and I'll just kind of throw this up for discussion, is to rather than saying our goal is zero, maybe saying our goal is a different number, like more of an actual objective. And maybe there's 15 or 20 buildings we'd like to do something with, and list that as our objective. Having an objective should be completely independent from the funding source, I'm thinking. It's clear to understand that if you don't have the money to rehabilitate the building, that's one thing, but to just to flat out say we have no objective of rehabilitating is, I think, a bit, maybe a bit of, needs some tweaking.
You said page 101.
Yeah, it's page 101 in the middle. It just makes reference, for example, it shows new construction for low-income, modern-income, above-income housing, and it shows that goal of 192. And then under conservation, it lists 90 different projects that are as an objective, but under rehabilitation, it shows zero. I'm just wondering, can it be explained maybe a little bit differently that we actually have an objective to rehabilitate projects? Or are there no projects that we have any interest in rehabilitating?
Well, we would have to evaluate the feasibility, given where our sources of money happen to be. But it's certainly possible. But I think we're going to have to pow-wow about where the money would come from. I wouldn't want to set an objective that's not attainable.
Well, let me give you a quick example. If you had an injury and you needed to go to a physical therapist, you wouldn't walk in and say, "Well, my objective is to not have any rehabilitation. If I haven't figured out how I'm going to pay my deductible," the goal would be to get better, to get healthy, and figure out how you're going to pay for it, secondly. Here, I'm just trying to decipher the differences between having a goal of rehabilitating a building. And then question two is, where are we going to find the money? Just that when you lump them together, it gives the impression that the city has no interest at all in rehabilitating properties. And I don't think that's the message you're trying to create.
True. I just don't have a number at this time.
Last question has to do with the concept of inventory of land. Does it have to be just land, or it could also be inclusive of projects that could be converted into units for low-income housing? And the specific thing I'm making reference to is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. There doesn't seem to be any mention in the housing element as to what I'll call potential units that could be built on the Boulevard. Is that something that's somewhere in the housing element? Or was that left out, or is that just?
I think it's in the housing element. I'd have to look at the inventory of underutilized land and see if we've identified that.
And that's part of the question. Does it have to be actual raw land, or could it be an old, what we'll call a teardown building that has the potential for being?
It can be.
So it could be, okay, either or. Thank you.
Okay. If you look on page 120 of the housing element, there's the last row in Table A3. It identifies Site 171 as the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and it shows the potential for about 203, 204 units? 214?
So is that three, just three projects for the entire Boulevard?
Well, it's rather, it's just a function of the way the Boulevard plan is designed, that in a certain stretch from Moore Park Road to Cano School Road, it's allocated a maximum of 71 dwellings. From Cano School to Rancho Road, 72 dwellings. And then Rancho Road to Duesenberg Drive, 71. That's where those numbers come from.
Mr. Towne?
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to augment Mr. Specter's comments, the sum, the 214 dwelling units, comes from the pre-existing residential capacity within the boundaries of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. So that's where the 214 dwelling unit number came from. And then the specific plan basically says, we don't want all those dwelling units concentrated in one area. We want them spread out, hence the 71 and 72 units in three different geographic areas.
Any other questions, Mr. Roundtree? Okay. Any other questions with staff? Commissioner Tapke?
One question related to one of the recommendations, and that has to do with the persons with disabilities, as we talk about encouraging the entities, et cetera, to provide more, which is a laudable point. But one of the issues simply goes back to, again, funds, money. Anytime we start providing additional units for this broad category, it requires additional funding for the services that are associated with it. And when I read through this earlier, there obviously is not a mention on that. I'm not sure that that's completely the point here. But is that, my assumption is that you've taken that into consideration, but are there any thoughts on where the additional funds will come from?
Well, that's always the problem, because depending on the level of disability, many times, this population requires supportive housing services, not just a place to live, but somebody to help them with the activities of daily living, taking care of their finances. That's always a problem. Now, there have been a number of projects throughout the state where perhaps because there was some special funding source, maybe from behavioral health, and through that funding source, they were able to take some portion of an affordable housing project, maybe one building or some group of units, and use that funding source to provide supportive housing. That's happened in the past. The dollars only go so far.
The Mini Mansions project is doing a fair amount of this on the Hillcrest Drive.
Yes.
And they were successful in receiving additional tax credits because of that. And frankly, some of that's because of the support that the city of Thousand Oaks put into this before the RDA has dropped out. Without that funding, that supportive services portion of their particular property probably would not have occurred. As I know, the Area Housing Authority has also looked into similar issues, as have several other entities to do those. The loss of the RDA is obviously significant, and I don't want to drive that into the ground. But we're all looking at that new portion of how to deal with it. This will be an element that we need to continue to address, but we'll need to find ways to bring in those collective funds in order to make an application, in order to get those services there. Because without them, we just wind up warehousing people, and that's not what we're trying to do. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions with staff before I go to the cards? Okay. I have four cards, so each speaker will be allotted five minutes. And the first card is Mr. Victor Abranzo. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence, please. Yeah, I was just taking the cards as they were given to me. Okay, Mr. Jim Wolfe, if you'd like to come forward. And then, Mr. Abranzo, would you like to speak second then? Okay. And Mr. Wolfe, you have five minutes if you state your name and city of residence, please. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman Reynolds and Commissioner. My name is Jim Wolfe, and I'm a board member of Senior Alliance for Empowerment, also known as SAFE, and also a resident of the Ranch Mobile Home Park. And we have reviewed the draft from the Planning Commission, and we would like to make, correct a few statements that are in respectfully, of course, within the draft. We have a lot of comments to make, but we, too many for this evening, so we'll do those in writing. But the main points, we have four main points that are my concern, and they revolve pretty much around page 61, where the city claims that the ranch residents opted out of the so-called mediation. Fact is, ranch representatives were thrown out of the discussions by the then-city attorney, as we testified before City Council. Further, the city's representative then refused to even discuss our return. Therefore, we did not choose to file a lawsuit. Rather, the city left us no choice but to seek protection from the courts to avoid several residents from becoming homeless. Also on page 61, paragraph 3, the city cites a newspaper story as fact, as a fact source, when the paper simply printed information that the city itself provided. The story reports that the average space rent for mobile home parks in the city is $450 per space, and that the rents for the ranch is $132 per space. Fact is, the ranch rents are and always have provided a competitive return for the land owner. Ranch density is 15 homes per acre, while other parks range from five to seven homes per acre. The return per acre for the ranch is actually $430 per space compared to the average for all parks of $450 per space. all parks of $450 per space. Further, at the completion of the 30% yearly rent increase over six years, ranch residents will be paying about two and one-half times the rent of the county's luxury parks in terms of actual space. The reason being that the city compares ranch with parks containing minimum double-wide homes with complete amenities and large spaces. Ranch has zero amenities, and my space, for example, is only 1,500 square feet. So some of you may have living rooms that size. This is 1,000 square feet less than the legal minimum for mobile home parks, incidentally. The third item is that the city claims the owner agreed to defer rent increases for very low-income residents but failed to define the rules. Therefore, the owner defines them. The city neglected to note that this amounts to a reverse mortgage, which effectively converts a portion of the homeowner's investment over to the landowner. And finally, the ranch consists of elderly, poor, and mostly disabled at the time of the council ruling. The average annual income of ranch park residents was $11,500 per year. Compare this to the government's table, listing extremely low income as $26,800 per year. So if $26,800 per year is extremely low income, what is $11,500 per year? I think maybe somebody has a thought, we can see if there's a word stronger than extremely someplace. In addition, at that time, over 50% of the elderly, poor in the park were also disabled. Nevertheless, 74 residents of self-supporting elderly, poor, self-supporting, self-supporting elderly, poor, were eliminated from the housing element. So that's my comments, and we thank you very much for the opportunity. We would be available to you folks anytime if we can be of any assistance whatsoever. And thank you again for your courtesy.
Thank you. Are there questions of the speaker?
If I may, just really quick.
Yes, Mr. Heer.
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. And just, certainly, I appreciate Mr. Wolfe's position on his desire to discuss this. I will state right off the bat that I'm comfortable with the wording that's listed on page 76 or 61 of the housing element. And I do not want to, we are in litigation with ranch at this time. If you want to discuss some public comment or some public gossips, I can talk to you about some public record issues that we have that I can reveal. But overall, I would caution all commissioners to be wary, just due to the fact that we are in litigation with ranch.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Wolfe.
Right. Thank you.
And the next speaker is Victor Abranzo. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes. Excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, I thank you for your time. I just want to follow on a few of comments made by Mr. Wolfe. While there are generically in your plan a grouping of mobile home parks, I think it's important, as you study the issue, to understand that mobile home park ranch was distinct in that it was limited to very low-income senior inhabitants. Those were the only people that were allowed to place their own owned mobile home on the property and reside on that property. Until Resolution 573, I believe, of 2011, they were protected by the permit which had allowed for the development of that park. That protection was eliminated in 2011 by City Council. What concerns me today, and why I bring that to you today, is this housing element doesn't seem to address the loss of affordable housing. I would respectfully suggest to you that by eliminating the very low income and the senior status for participation in that park, and with the expectation that rentals will grow at a fantastically greater rate than will Social Security and pension, i.e. our fixed payments, many of us are soon to be homeless because we won't be allowed to stay. And after we leave, there is no further restriction on being open only to seniors or very low-income people. I think in your element, you have to think about what you have lost, and in terms of either your rehabilitation or your affordability, what are you gonna do to replace what you I would also note at this time that, while respectfully, I don't think I've been before you commissioners, members of SAFE, representatives of the park, were before the commission and the city council numerous times, objecting to the proposed changes. They occurred nonetheless. Mr. Behr states that we were in litigation. As far as I know, the courts dismissed that litigation, but and except for the fact the city never bothered to serve our attorneys with the proposed final order. So if we are still in litigation, I would look to the city as to why. And when I looked at the language on page 61, I would ask myself, if it's defamatory, if it's liable, does it open us up to another claim, and is it necessary to do so? In the special needs area, the ranch loss wasn't addressed at all, and I would suggest to you, as identified by Mr. Wolfe, that a significant majority of the population who currently resides within Ranch Mobile Home Park is disabled. And by virtue of eliminating the protections for the very low-income and senior, you have also eliminated them for those disabled people. Okay. Last thought is, and I see the time is about to run. We spent some time at the hearing on November 8th. We provided written documentation at the hearing on November 8th. The good Mr. Towne took Kofi's notes at the hearing on November 8th. We haven't got a thing back other than to, this is the study session, if you want to participate. Feeling like the thoughts so far have been ignored, respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Ferris?
One quick question. So obviously, we are, we're discussing a portion of the draft element that refers to the mobile homes. And some of the things in here, for example, it talks about government construction declares mobile home park is permitted. And so a lot of these things are very generic in general, and they do give sort of a history of where we are, and we have a rent stabilization ordinance and a mobile home park ordinance. But I do notice that they talk to specifically, for example, Ranch Mobile Home Park. Is that, is that the primary issue you and the other residents want to make sure is brought to our attention? Is it the concern that there's any discussion, or is it the specific discussion of where the rents are? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to address the concerns we have and also understand the caution that we've talked about, or at least the city attorney has mentioned.
In terms of the study, when you lump Ranch Mobile Home Park with all of the remaining mobile home parks, you blend, make disappear the distinction of that park as it was before the 2011 resolution, a park exclusively for not low-income, but very low-income senior citizens. So that gets blended away. That's one issue. Number two is, to the respect, to the extent that you have given up those very low-income, senior, affordable units, you have not mentioned that loss anywhere in terms of dealing with the inventory of housing for either the very low-income seniors or the disabled, nor accounted for why, in an effort to make up for the lack of that housing, you had allowed these units to, in essence, go away as that protected group. Does that make sense?
It's been very helpful, yes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. And commissioners.
Any other questions? Thank you. And the next speaker is Mr. Brian Tresensky. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence, please, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. Commissioners, Mr. Towne, Mr. Specter, thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak this evening on our very important document that the city is moving forward with on the update of the housing element. I read it. It's very well-written. It's easy to understand. Also, as the city planner, I know what it's like to write these type of documents, and congratulations, you did a great job. First thing I'd like to mention here is that I believe this document is gonna serve the city very well. It clearly demonstrates that the city continues to be a city of caring and compassion for all the incomes, income groups, and also living arrangements in Thousand Oaks. I think that I would like to offer at this time three additional goals, if you would, for your consideration, for Section 6 of the Housing Action Plan. The first one deals with what we've heard many times called sustainable development. And we've all seen the diagram. We have environment, we have social, and we have economic. And we put the three spheres together, the center portion, sustainable development. I would like to be able to see a goal whereby, when we look at housing development projects, we look at the three elements. First of all, environmental, the reuse of building materials, the recycled building materials, energy-efficient building components, such as windows and roofs, appliances, solar and shade orientation, building that component into the plan, because it fits in with all the rest of the elements. From an economic point of view, housing intensification through as-of-right secondary dwelling units on existing-built residential lots, wide shallow lots, is excellent. It is a very important way to be able to provide greater efficiencies. We have existing facilities, infrastructure like sewage systems, gas, electricity. Intensification provides and takes advantage of existing facilities and utilities, as opposed to longer distances of lines and services. From a social point of view, sites that are suitable for affordable housing for very low and low-income living arrangements should be in close proximity to existing or planned community network of services, medical, schools, shopping, and employment. We shouldn't be putting them in isolated locations because it's a very cost-effective site. That is an important consideration, no question. But these are the very folks who need to have access to these services in our community, and by keeping them in a further distance away from existing facilities or planned, I don't believe is serving our citizens as well. Another goal that I'd like to, for your consideration, would be to ensure that the rate of distribution of housing growth will not exceed the existing and future planned capacity of public facilities and services. Therefore, let's not build beyond our means. Let's work within the services that we are able to offer and provide, and therefore provide a more sustainable growth development. As a, as a last item, it's just a point of correction on page 70. It identifies the Ventura County Flood Control District. It's actually the Ventura County Watershed Protection District. Just a small comment in there. It's kind of a point near and dear to me. Anyhow, thank you very much for this opportunity. This is, I look forward to working with you in the workshop, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there questions of the speaker? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And our final card is from Mr. Mel Silverberg. If you'd come forward, state your name and city of residence. Excuse me, and you have five minutes. Good evening.
My name is Mel Silverberg, and I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for over 19 years. I want to thank you for the commission, for the opportunity to, to address the commission and provide comments on the housing element update. For your information, my background served five terms on a council on aging, was chair of the council's Senior Adult Master Plan, which was adopted by the city council on October 2009. I'm also an appointed member of the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, where I've served over five terms. In short, I'm a volunteer advocate for the senior adult community. My comments this evening, however, represent only my own. I'm not representing these organizations. I'm just providing information that I believe is pertinent to this hearing. I do intend to submit detailed comments in writing, because I cannot really get into the type of detail that I would like to in five minutes. So I'm just gonna focus on a few of the highlights. First, let me say that I completely endorse the comments submitted as part of the November 8th, 2012 workshop, shown in Section 1B of the draft on pages one and two, especially Items F and H, and I'd like to speak a bit more about those. The draft housing element does not sufficiently address the anticipated dynamic impact of the next 10 to 20 years, the aging of our population. This is nationwide, it's in California, it's all. Using the 2010 census data, starting with boomers aged 55 to 59, our present population in Thousand Oaks of boomers and seniors make up 25%. And it's important to consider the boomers, because through the time of this, through the time period of this plan, lo and behold, they're gonna find themselves that they're gonna be seniors. Okay. If we now, okay, this demography needs to be addressed in the housing element. Some research shows the number of cities in California are starting to address this in their housing elements. It is prudent and not too early to start planning for the next decade and beyond. I mean, if you look at housing and how you start to move forward, you really need to know which way you're going. And it has to be, it has to be part of an integrated program within the, within the whole, you know, within the whole housing element. Fortunately, the city council had the foresight and vision to address the burgeoning, emerging senior population. And as I mentioned, they commissioned a, and approved the Senior Adult Master Plan, referred to as SAMP. In 2000, six volunteer implementation committees were formed. One of those was a housing implementation committee. And this committee has done a great job in studying the demographics of the city, of the seniors and boomers, and are developing a strategy for dealing with the future of seizing, senior housing options. I believe it is important and useful to, to note this in the housing element. No other cities in California, to my knowledge, have gone to the level of depth at the Council on Aging SAMP Housing Implementation Committee. And I think it's important to reflect that, that there are, that there are groups. There's a group in the city that commissioned by the city council for this very purpose. Finally, I should note, no senior housing project has been built in the city since the Area Housing Authority project of roughly, I think, 2003. Information that I receive periodically on waiting lists, not necessarily only seniors, but seniors and others, for example, in Mini Mansions, I understand it's several hundred. The last I hear from Area Housing Authority people, it's over 300, the waiting list. And this includes seniors and nonseniors. So I thank you for listening. I will embellish on this in my written comments to the committee.
Thank you. Are there questions of the speaker? Are there questions of the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that finishes our speakers' cards. I do have one written statement card in support. And at this time, we'll go back to staff. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Spector?
No, not this time.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. Town, I'm sorry, Commissioner Ferris, did you have?
I guess basically, maybe Mr. Town was going to step in, but basically, I was going to ask about what the format of what we're doing is. Usually, it goes into closing hearings and having motions, and we're not going to do that, so maybe Mr. Town can help us through this.
That's why I was turning it over to Mr. Town, because I didn't know.
Yes, this is, is not a case where you're taking a vote on the item before you, it's simply an overview, but an opportunity also for early input, and staff appreciates the input that we've heard tonight. And we will consider that as we prepare the final administrative draft, which we'll be coming back to, as I mentioned earlier.
And what is the deadline for, to receive information? Is there a deadline?
We have a deadline of...
We're asking for comments by the 14th of February from the public, and sure, the commission's welcome to provide them. And the only reason there's a deadline is, at the end of the day, we have to get something adopted in October, and because we need to prepare a draft, send it to the state, they take quite a long time, maybe two rounds, perhaps, of review before we are ready to go to planning commission hearing and then city council hearing.
Okay, so that's a week from this coming Thursday, the 14th.
Yes.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yeah, just a quick question for Mr. Town. This is a process that we go through, how often to take a look at the housing element? And I think that might be good for some of the viewers, anybody listening to understand what this is all about.
Well, the housing element covers an eight-year period, so we do it about that often. And so that happens more frequently. The other element, the conservation element, was last comprehensively updated in 1996. So, that's updated really on an as-needed basis, and you'll be hearing about that in a moment. But the one that is most routinely updated is the housing element.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in response to the last speaker's comments, Mr. Silverberg, appreciate the reference to the Senior Adult Master Plan, and that was one of the reasons why Mr. Spector mentioned that survey that was done. The SAMP has a housing team, and I will forward to the commission a copy of that report. It went to the city council, and they adopted it on October 23 of last year. And that housing group not only has done this online survey, but they've also put together ideas for non-traditional housing options, such as aging-in-place, home-sharing, senior cohousing, and secondary dwelling units, which are already addressed in our code. But the emphasis is trying to deal with this apparent number of seniors who are concerned about being able to afford housing as they get older. And so, we do recognize that report. I'll provide it to the commission as additional background, and that was one of the reasons why, again, Mr. Spector mentioned that online survey, because it is quite interesting and provides valuable data.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Tapking?
Well, I think there are several points you're into discussion, I assume, okay?
Yeah.
Along this line that are of interest to us on the housing element side, there are several distinct populations here. One is our senior group. One is our senior, is our disabled populations. But another one that is up and coming, or we're seeing much of this, is the single that's involved here. And one of the questions, and one of the points that we need to continue to address, is the fact that that population continues to grow, which is both a good thing for us, because it means our populations are here rather than always going somewhere else. But it provides additional demands upon our services. And a question that, in my review of the element, that I didn't see, that perhaps we could look at, you know, as we continue to refine this, is how that breaks down? Are those senior singles, seniors? Are they single young? Because part of this, then, depends upon the age group, as well as the services that are necessary, plus the type of housing. The younger, higher-wage earners that are singles require a completely different type of housing than our seniors do, and therefore either want more or less in that particular point. Along the same line, in the housing element, we see this significant portion of our population that is overpaying, both for purchases as well as rentals. Part of that's a market condition. Part of that comes about because, as our market shifted like crazy, rentals became much more valuable, and so rents escalated. And so, that's clearly represented in this element at this point, and the overpayment is still a clear representation of the fact that the prices are still kind of crazy and people are overburdened along part of that. So, I think as we continue to work through this process, we need to be aware that we have these two expanding populations, one on the senior side, who are going to be demanding of more services and different types of services, and the other one being that single population of which I cannot tell you tonight how many of those, what percentage of that are senior singles versus young senior, because those are two distinct populations. So, we're looking at three more elements in here that, as we, as we heard from some of our guests tonight speaking, we need to begin or be aware of what we're planning for. Now, some of that's covered in here, and some of it is simply what will the market bear, what will the market step forward on? Okay? So, that's a concern and an issue that I would like to see us continue to be aware of as we refine this. One other point, Mr. Town, that I think I'd like to have you address, again, partly because I think our general population needs to be aware of this process. This element at some point comes back to the group, it's reviewed several more times, it's going to go to the city council, who's going to, quote, approve it, and then they're going to send it off to the state. The state's going to go through it and either say yes or no, or make changes, et cetera. There's additional comment time for citizens at that particular point to say, I think this is a wonderful plan, or I think it stinks. But the goal is that the city requires, obtains a certified housing element, correct? Now, as you answer that, I think part of the critical element with that is, why is that so important? If we do not have a certified housing element, the benefit and the loss, because some of our sister cities are saying, I'm not going to deal with this, and it addresses funding issues that can be quite significant within our future, so...
No, good, good point and question. The process that we're going to follow this time with this housing element update is, after tonight's study session, we will be sending it off, as Mr. Spector mentioned, to the state, to the Housing and Community Development Department, with the intent to have the state review it, provide input. We would obviously modify it. We'd most likely be sending it back to the state so that they could review and potentially certify it upfront. And then we'll be bringing it back to the planning commission and the city council, who may make further adjustments to it. But that helps us to understand what requirements the state may include that aren't in black and white. The last time that we did this, we did an overview, like we're doing tonight. We then sent it off to the state, we did make changes to it in response, went to the planning commission, went to the city council, sent it back to the state. But there were further changes at that point in time from HCD, so we had to bring it back to the council a second time. So, this go-around, we're trying to gather all of the state's comments before bringing it back to this planning commission. The intent is to bring this back in July. The state typically needs two months to make comments on this type of a document. But it is important that the state, first of all, has, well, they need to certify this element, as we mentioned, but it could affect funding. It could potentially expose the city to litigation, and so that's a concern as well. So, we do want the state to review it and hopefully certify it sort of earlier in the process than the last time. But there will be, again, there will be, this will be for this body again and in front of the city council.
Are there other comments? Commissioner Roundtree?
First, I want to throw out an idea, since this is an idea-generating session, and I'll plant this with the people in the audience and at home. Assume we get back a report that's been verified and certified by everybody in the state, and it comes back, and people look at each other and say, well, where are we going to get the money? Loss of housing, loss of mobile home parks, you know, let's just cut to the chase, where are we going to get the money?
Redevelopment.
So many of these projects we're talking about historically have come from redevelopment dollars. Well, they're not there. Now, I don't have an answer here, but I know a couple of these sessions that we've attended here, there's been a lot of brainstorming amongst other cities as to where we're going to get the money. Well, if it's good enough for city employees and, you know, officials like myself and others on the commission, why shouldn't us, as community residents, begin thinking about the same thing? Coming up with different ideas, writing them down, submitting them to staff? One idea could be incredible. I mean, you've all seen how one idea can change things significantly. So, as much as I'm glad you're all here for what you do in the community, don't just stop by just showing up at a meeting and listening, maybe use that as motivation to get involved and start doing something about it, even if it's an idea, or ask a friend. What do we do, what do we get the money to do it? Talk to your developer friends. There's going to have to be a public and private joint venture going forward. That's going to be the new model, because the money's just not there. So, whether it's to form an ad hoc committee, which I would be more than happy to chair or co-chair, whatever you might call it, to start getting more input from just five or six or eight people who are trying to do the best they can, when we've got 123,000 residents in this town who probably have some really good ideas, too. We want to, we need them. We need the money. So, that's my one suggestion for tonight. In terms of things that I've been hearing tonight, what, I've written a few notes, and this wasn't suggested tonight, but we do have an increased demand for mid-level jobs in Thousand Oaks. We all seem to be getting older, living longer, we have more single households, not enough affordable housing, we've got a reduction in mobile home parks, an increased demand for low-income housing, and it's just too darn expensive to buy a house. Another statistic that was not brought up tonight that I found amazing was, in the population age group, ages 24 to 40, we actually have a decreasing population. 24 to 40, childbearing years, families, this town is built around that concept. Where are they going? Well, I've got a 24-year-old. He can't afford to buy a house. So, we need to identify not just the seniors who have their issues, which certainly, they're going to be more vocal and more educated in the subjects, but the 24-year-olds, quite frankly, they don't show up for commission meetings. They just say to themselves, I think I'll go live in Long Beach, it's more affordable down there. So, we need to address those parts of our population who are our future. If I fast-forward, when I'm 70 years old, it's those 24-year-olds who are going to be running this town, and we need that population here. So, anything we can do to encourage that age group within the specific element that we're working on tonight, I'd also encourage.
And along those same lines that I was thinking, well, we've been talking about this tonight, is housing for those who need it. And we're usually looking at the moderate or the low-income, but I've had several friends that have been buying larger houses, because those 24-year-olds are staying at home, are coming back home after going to college, because they can't either find a job or they can't afford the housing, and they want to stay in the community. I think even our county clerk went and did that and got a larger house, so that, because he realized that his children would be staying at the house. So, I mean, there are all kinds of aspects, and we want our children to be able to live in this community. Mine don't, but it's not because they can't afford a house here, it's jobs. But I think that we want our children to be raised here, to be educated, and then come back home, and I think that's what a lot of people want to do, that they want to then contribute to the community they grew up in. I think that's important to a lot of the young people, and if the housing isn't here for them, then they're not going to stick around. Are there other comments? Commissioner Ferris?
I want to just go off a little bit of Commissioner Tapking's comments on the overpayment. What I would like to see in the document, if it could, kind of goes back to some of the comments I made earlier, to give me a reference to understand if overpayment is really a problem, I'd like to see, in Thousand Oaks, I'd like to see what it would be, at least within Ventura County. I think that would be a help for us. The, you know, we have a table that says this percentage of this particular income group, whether they're owners or renters, are overpaying. That's because we've defined it as 30 percent of their income. If it were 33 or 35, the numbers would be down a little bit, so it's hard to gauge it. But we do have a higher median income here, but we also have higher prices. So, it's hard to tell whether we have a problem with overpayment relative to other communities or whether it's, whether it's more. So, I think that would help us, from a planning document standpoint, because we're going to be relying on this for the next eight years. Actually, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's a point that you make that's really well-taken. But the numbers that we deal with, and obviously, it's an area that I'm real familiar with, when we talk about the 30 percent, these are standards that are set. And so, when we put these, when these are put into these reports, that's the standard, so that when you go to Cucamonga, or Long Beach, or Bellflower, or Ventura, the city of Ventura, and you define what this is, you can use that same set of numbers. It used to be 20 percent, and then it was 25 percent, and now it's 30, and it's going to creep up again, because we talk, when we talk about this statistically in an open setting like this, we're using that number. But when you talk about it from a mortgage perspective or a rental perspective, the number changes, and the number changes higher. So, and I think you've really, you really touched on a point that, in the industry that I deal with specifically, we look at those, because, quite frankly, part of it is affordability, is, well, what's affordable to you? What are you willing to pay? If your income is, pick a number, $50,000, and it's, you're willing to spend 30 percent of that, that's $15,000 at that particular point, and $15,000 on an, we're talking rough numbers here, on an annual basis, gets you what? A rent of roughly $1,100?
And that's the reason, you know, I mentioned, I actually, I have no problem with, if you set it at 25 or 30 or 33, as long as there is a standard, if it keeps moving around, then who knows what that is. The numbers 33 and 35 come into my head, because that is what the banks use generally. But, you know, if you give them a teaser rate at 1.5, and then it decides to kick up with you 30 percent, you know, that's pretty affordable for them for the first three years until they get, you know, foreclosed on. So, and we know what happened there. And so, from a, from a planning document standpoint, it helps to get that relative sense of how, how other communities are dealing with at least the same definitions and the same standards.
And it's the comparison.
Yeah.
It's the comparison.
And that's exactly right.
I couldn't agree with you more.
That's exactly right.
We can definitely do that.
At least we can judge it from that point. The other, the other part, I'd want to make sure that at least we get into the, into the housing element language. Again, I see, I see this element, it is a planning document that we will be using for the next eight years, and of course, it's a snapshot of kind of where we are right now, so there's a lot of immediate information about what's going on now. But some of the, some of the folks who brought their comments to the, to the commission today regarding ranch, mobile home park, I read some of the things in here, and it's unclear whether, for me, it is necessary, that is stated in the manner at which it is, to be helpful for the city as a long-term planning document. And I would like us to take a little bit of a sense of, is there a way we can characterize the nuggets of information that are important for planning? See if we're able to incorporate that into the document, and there are just some of these things, I think, you know, they're going to be sitting there for eight years, and commission, eight years from now, is going to remember this particular tit-for-tat sort of thing, and it's unclear whether it might be necessary. And that's, that's my comments on those two items.
Mr. Heer?
I mean, I'm certainly willing to work with staff in trying to, I don't know if you want to say soften it up, I mean, again, as I said before, you know, the comment of, for example, the mediation, when you mediate, for example, you actually sign a confidentiality agreement, and that was one of the factors, they did not sign that confidentiality agreement. So, obviously, a mediator is going to say, you're not going to participate in mediation. So, that's why it's an... So that's why it's an op-out. I mean, you can go either way with it. I mean, you can, obviously, we could sit here and go with both terms, but certainly I'll work with the staff and maybe try to soften it up or understand your point of what you're trying to do, and I appreciate that. We are also trying to put the facts down as to how we see for mobile home. And again, this is mobile home issues, not necessarily affordable housing issues as might have been interpreted, but we will certainly take a look at it, and I'll be happy to do that for you. Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Terrell?
Yeah, to follow up with, Commissioner Ferris actually asked you a question, the, what you're really referring to is the identification of the ranch mobile home park within the document itself, instead of being a little bit more broad and general?
Yeah, I mean, I think some of the, you know, if you read into that section on page 60 of the element or 75 of our packet, the first three paragraphs talk about, you know, the zoning of what it is, the minimum square footage, you know, those are all very general factual items dealing with the city and so on. And of course, there's going to be a discussion of, you know, how we got to a 10-year mediation to where there's not going to be any, you know, either adjustments or conversions of the parks. Some of the extra details, you know, obviously, this is still a very sensitive issue, and the question is, is it helpful for us from a planning standpoint in using the element to, to carry us forward? And I just ask that staff take that into consideration as to what we put into these sections.
I'd have to agree with you, because the, you know, who knows what's going to be happening down the line that we could apply the same thing with. So that would be, that would be a good direction.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, I guess we'll go on with the next item, and thank you very much for coming down this evening and participating in the discussion, the study session. And we'll go on to case 6B. If the clerk would please call that.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case CONS 2012-70052. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request: Study session on the draft update to the conservation element of the general plan. Location: Citywide.
Thank you. And Mr. Burgess, if you'd like to give the staff report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. It's kind of a privilege to be able to do this tonight, because normally I sit up here and answer questions, and it's nice to be able to present something to you. What we want to look at tonight is the draft update to the conservation element of the general plan. I promise I won't show you as many tables and graphs as Mr. Specter did. Okay, so our purpose here is to review the update to the conservation element of the general plan, and basically get, give you an idea of what we're looking at in this document, and get your input on what you think we might want to add or delete, or any changes that you think may be included here. This is a required element of state law, and the purpose is to address the conservation of natural resources. The state has a number of other things that thinks you should really discuss here. Many of them don't apply to us, so we've included six topics which we think actually apply to the city of Thousand Oaks. The first is physiography, which is kind of the bones of the community, knolls, mountains, arroyos, things of that nature. Hydrology, which involves water quality and streams and drainages in the city. Biological resources, which involves flora and fauna and movement corridors. Cultural resources, which includes archaeological and historical resources. Paleontology, which involves fossils of ancient forms of life and climate change to the effect, to the extent that it can affect natural resources. And for each topic in the document, we have text, policies, and implementation measures. And this is a picture out at Wildwood Mesa, and there are some very interesting rare and endangered plants in this area right here. I don't know if you can see that, but anyway, it's interesting. A little background here, in 1972, the conservation element was originally adopted, and that was a surprisingly small document. It was about six pages long, and in 1996, it was comprehensively updated. And that's the one we've been using up until this time, and it's served us very well. But it really is time to update that. The state requires that you update these things in a periodic level based on need. And what we have in this document is new maps, updated data, and that includes new names for a lot of the plants. There's been some really interesting upheavals and botany since that time. We've added paleontology and climate change as new chapters, and it's a more user-friendly format, we think, and that, that involves basically organizing things a little better in the text, I think. And there's not really many changes to existing policies, because I think we did a really good job the first time. Okay, well, physiography is the first thing we'll deal with here, and that involves hillsides and ridge lines, and they have tremendous scenic benefit here at the city. We have a scenic highways element, and our policy focus here is basically hillside and ridgeline protection, and that's a really important issue. Excuse me, let me get my position here. This is actually the North Ranch Open Space looking southwest. So it's, it's really, and I think the interesting thing to point out here is, you look at this and you see it's basically undisturbed ridge lines, and I think development has really worked in nicely with the community here, the vegetation. One of the things that's interesting about the Cano Valley, it is, it's ringed by knolls, and it has a tremendous amount of topographic relief. The lowest area within the city is Hill Canyon, which is 230 feet above sea level. The typical area in the valley is about 700 to 900 feet, and we go up to 2,320 feet in the Simi Hills. So we've got a lot of topographic contrast here, and that, of course, provides habitat for a number of plants that have specific requirements. Well, our policy focus here is 25% slope protection and then 25-foot-high manufactured slopes as a maximum height, and I think that has served us very well in the past. We're continuing that policy because it's a great way of protecting these resources. And if you look at these, these view sheds here, it's really quite extraordinary. It really is a relatively undisturbed view shed. We have a number of new maps in the document. This one deals with major landforms, drainages, and floodplains, and this is included on page 154 in your packet, which may be a little easier to see. I think you have a color map in there. And these maps are GIS-based. They were done by Mr. Wiltchua, and they kind of follow the original maps we had in the earlier conservation element. And the thing that's really interesting is how accurate those maps actually were. This is really not a tremendous change from what we had originally. The old maps were done basically using the old-fashioned ways of doing it. We used zipatone. It was hand-drawn, and we used X-acto knives and things. This is, this is much better. We have layers of information we can apply to this. And you can see this one shows basically prominent ridge lines. We have prominent knolls, hills, and landforms on this. Major ridge lines are indicated by these black lines here. The kind of yellowish color are prominent knolls, hills, and landforms, and there are other things on here as well, drainages in particular. Another issue in terms of the element is hydrology, which is, in this case, lakes and lake shores we're looking at. There are two lakes in Thousand Oaks, Lake Eleanor and Westlake Lake, and we want to minimize the impacts to these lakes and preserve natural and cultural features at Lake Eleanor. Now, it's interesting to note that Westlake Lake is actually primarily developed in the city portion. The Lake Eleanor area is part of an open space area, and that is protected as natural open space, and there are some significant cultural resources in that area as well. We have, we need to look at streams and creeks, and we have a 60-square-mile watershed within the city. About 80% of that is the Arroyo Cano and its tributaries, and a small portion in the southeastern portion of the city is Lindero and Potero Creek, which drain the balance of the site, the city. This is an interesting picture of Paradise Falls in flood stage, and I think it's, it's amazing to see the amount of power that comes out of some of these areas. This is not a typical situation for them. In this case, our policy focus is to minimize impact of new development on streams and creeks, and preserve the creek in natural states in public open space where possible. And I think we've, luckily, because of the open space we have in the city, we've been able to do that in most cases. There are flood-prone areas in the city, and these are identified by FEMA and are available on the city website. Our policy focus here is that floodplains should be reserved for open space and limited recreation, not for housing. And other issues in terms of hydrology are stormwater retention and detention basins, and we have small and large basins around the city. Many of them are under the jurisdiction of the Ventura County Watership Protection District, and the basin design that is sensitive to natural environment is important to us because there are, these sites can actually look attractive if they're done correctly. And there's a number of plants that can be used in these areas that can take dry conditions and also wet conditions. And of course, water supply is another issue that's important here. This is actually Bard Reservoir. We need, we have to make sure that the water supply is adequate to meet the demand, and so water conservation is also an issue. There's a lot of plant communities in our natural area. This is the biological resources section. Plant communities include chaparral, California sage scrub, riparian, and southern oak woodland, which often occur together, oak savanna, and grassland. We have about 40 mammal species, 160 bird species, and 730 plant species, and we have lists of all of those species at the back of the document, if you care to look at them. Everything has been updated, and we're interested in any other information people have on some of these resources. Policy focus here is protection of plant communities and fuel management at the urban edge. This is a very beautiful Calicordus glivatus, which is the golden mariposa lily, not endangered, but kind of a neat one. And another map, this map shows the wildlife corridors and the chaparral. It shows the plant communities. Chaparral, California sage scrub. Chaparral is indicated by the green color. Let me see the cursor here. Sage scrub is kind of this brownish color, taupe, and the grassland is yellowish. And then there's riparian and coast live oak woodland, which is a little bit more scattered and somewhat more restricted. And this map is, has been developed partly with the help of the National Park Service, but also a lot of staff time in terms of our own information on these resources. Wildlife movement corridors are a pertinent issue, and here's, of course, a little bobcat. Our main issue in this regard is to try and link open space areas, large parts of open space areas with one another, so that there is genetic interchange in these areas, so that animal populations don't become stagnant. And we're concerned mainly with the Santa Monica Mountains, Simi Hills, and actually the other mountains in the area. In terms of biological resources, oaks, landmark trees are very important to the city. We have a number of oak trees, coast live oak, valley oak, and scrub oak, and there's another one called Palmer oak, which we discovered fairly recently, not very common. Oak trees are all protected in the city, and that includes any planted oaks as well, if they are in genus Quercus. Landmark trees include California sycamore, bay laurel, black walnut, and toyon. And our policy focus here is protection of these resources through the landmark tree and oak tree ordinances and resolutions, and I think you've dealt with some of those in the past. Wetland and riparian habitats are extremely important in terms of biodiversity. There's a number of bird species, for instance, that only breed in certain types of wetlands, and our policy focus here is to preserve wetlands in open space where possible, encourage habitat restoration, and we've done that in several places very successfully. Hill Canyon, and Mr. Chuck Rogers is here tonight to talk about that a little bit, perhaps. That's an award-winning project. Rancho Potero, we've actually recreated a wetland out there. And Wildwood Creek, we've done quite a bit of work with removing palm trees and invasive exotic weeds in that area. In terms of, another really important subject for biological resources is rare, threatened, endangered, and sensitive species. There are about 17 plant species within the city and 27 animal species that are considered to be sensitive, and our whole policy focus here is to avoid sensitive species as development occurs wherever possible. This one here is Pentakita lionii, Lion's Pentakita. You may have heard of this plant. It's a little aster, and it grows in only a few little areas in Thousand Oaks, nowhere else on earth. So it's really a very rare plant. And, you know, I'd also, if the commission is interested, I'd always be happy to take anybody out to see these plants. I know where they occur, so that's kind of an open invitation to you. This is cultural resources we're looking at now, and that involves the Chumash, who have lived here in the valley for 7,000 years and continue to live here. And there's many significant sites, and our policy focus here is to conserve archaeological resources in open space wherever possible. And if we feel that a development is going in in an area that has archaeological resources, we'll have an archaeological survey done, and that's a very good way of trying to determine if there's any impacts to these areas. And if there, if there is a problem there, we will usually try and move development away from that site. And there are also 14 historical landmarks within the city. These are culture, these are historical resources, so they're after the influx of Europeans, and our focus here is conservation in coordination with the Cano Recreation and Park District. And here is a map, a new map, showing the historic sites within the city, and you'll notice that one of them is, I think it's number 13 is Jungleland, and that's where we are tonight. That's all that's left of it is the Civic Arts Plaza. And then paleontology is a new chapter in the, in the element, and we are here looking at fossils of marine and terrestrial animals that are no longer here in the city. There are places in the northern and eastern part of the city where we have sedimentary rocks, and that's where these things might occur. And then climate change, which is, we are trying to comply with AB 32, which is the action plan for climate change here, or for dealing with climate change here in California. And we're, our main concern here is, as it will affect natural resources. I think they're anticipating temperature increases in California. As we look at temperature increases, we will also see drying spells and many effects on the local flora, so that's a, that's a really important issue for us. And the other thing we have developed is a city energy action plan. Mr. Chuck Rogers is here to discuss that to some extent.
Your microphone, your microphone is not...
I'll start again. Good evening. This is the first time I've ever spoke for the planning commission, but what a pleasure it is to be here tonight with you. My name is Chuck Rogers, and I am the superintendent of the Hill Canyon Waste Water Treatment Plant, and I'm blessed every day to get to go to work down there, because it is just a place of spectacular beauty. The story that I'm going to tell you about, the, you know, energy plan that we put together, the energy management team, one of the members of it, John Brooks, is up here. He represents the environmental programs here as well, is, you know, we are one of the greenest cities in the United States. When you take a look at the things that we have accomplished as a group over the last 10 years, they really are quite spectacular. Before, people were talking about climate change. The city of Thousand Oaks were doing simple things to, you know, lessen our carbon footprint before they even knew they had one. And I'll give you some quick statistics if I could. In the last 10 years, our carbon CO2 emissions have dropped by 37%. Now, that's only through the year 2010, and you're going to see them absolutely plummet the next three years, and I'll tell you why in just a little bit. But at the beloved Hill Canyon Waste Water Treatment Plant, we've seen our carbon footprint drop 71% in that time. As of today, we're 83, or as of 2012, 83% renewable air. We also do something extraordinary. We buy most, well, we buy all the electricity for the 16 major accounts here in the city, including this building right now, is that your energy is coming from wind projects in Iowa and California, and landfill in Washington. So pretty extraordinary stuff going on. There are very few places in the United States that are doing this, and very few cities that are doing it. Some are lucky, like Austin, Texas, and they get a lot of wind power around there, and they're able to acquire it, but you're not going to find many cities here in California that are so far ahead of the game on this. So we did put together our energy action plan, and it's just a continuation of the good things that we've been doing. I think you probably know 401 and 403 had a solar project put in there, you know, but every year, we're taking a look, and almost every day that I spend, a portion of it is finding a way to, you know, not only do practical things to save money, to conserve, to optimize, you know, to find good deals for our citizens, but, you know, just do the right thing, and this is a wonderful place and environment to do that. I'm going to stick around. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and, you know, the other thing too, our, you know, our fleet, we have over 50% of our vehicles are alternative fuel vehicles here at the city of Thousand Oaks. And I can say that I drove the first Prius, and we bought the first one here, and I don't know how many years, I think it's like 12 or 13 years old, and it's going to be retired next week, so I'm going to finally say goodbye to it. So, anyway, I'll be around to answer whatever questions you might have, and thank you for all the good work you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Back to us? Back to us?
Back to me for a minute. Thank you, Chuck, and I think it's really great to see how this can work on a local level. It's really important to be able to reduce your carbon footprint, and I think they're doing just that. Just to recap on the, sorry. I'm going backwards here. Wait a minute. There we go. Planning process. January 31st, whoops, sorry. Through March 5th is the public review period, so any comments you can get to us by March 5th would be good. We've also provided documents to the, to state and public, or state and federal agencies, and also to environmental groups and citizens, so we are hoping that we'll get some comments from those individuals. This is the planning commission study session tonight, and at some point, the planning commission will make a recommendation, we hope. We'll bring it back to them. At some point, they'll make a recommendation to the city council, and then we hope the city council will adopt the conservation element at that point. And so just to recap, conservation element provides policy basis for protection of natural resources of local significance, frequently used during review of development projects. And I think that's important to note, that we use this very, very much when we're writing environmental documents and things of that nature. This update primarily refreshes maps and data without extensive changes to existing policies. And once again, I think we've included some things that have made a difference, but the policies are pretty much the same. And we've included new chapters in paleontology and climate change, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Are there questions? Well, I, Mr. Burgess, you were talking about the cultural resources. There's really 15 within the city, so now's the time for me to fess up. When we were doing, taking the county cultural heritage, the designations, and I was working with Larry, just ran into him the other day. Mark White. There was one that I said, "Don't put it on your list. I'm really not too sure where it is." It's in the Wildwood area. I've never been out to it, and I was on the cultural, the county cultural heritage board for 16 years. There's a cistron out in the Wildwood area, and it is designated a county landmark. The county has all the records. I've got some records at home on it, but it was one that, for some reason, we just never put on the list because I wasn't too sure really where it was located, and I have a big thing about not designating, not doing anything unless I've been on that spot. And so it was one that's just been passed over, and I've thought about it over the years, and I've mentioned it to John Prescott. It's been many years since I mentioned it to John, that it should be a city landmark because you took all of the county ones and you made them city ones, plus you added some other ones, the Hillcrest Center and some other ones. So I really think that maybe it's a time after all these years that it should be included, and I don't know if it's possible to do that.
Normally, those kinds of things.
Just list it as a county, as a county, maybe because, I don't know if the city council, I guess it's the cultural heritage board, and I know that there is an expense if anything's done with the county, but for the city to go and maybe make that a city landmark too. And, and so there really should be 15 listed instead of 14.
The appropriate procedure, then, would be to try to verify the location of it, and then, of course, this body could recommend that the city council, which serves as the cultural heritage board, consider adding that as the 15th historic landmark.
Okay, but I'd like to, I don't know if it's possible to put it in this conservation element as it's a county landmark, but it is within the city, I'm assuming.
That's just the kind of information we need, so we'll look into that. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll get you the information then, but other than that, I found it so very interesting as I was reading it, I guess my husband was looking over my shoulder because he said, "Why is there a California poppy in it?" Well, it's your plant that was yellow, and I just colored it in with the highlighter because I really couldn't figure out. He said it was a lily something, but I was glad to see the colored pictures in the report.
You know, one of the things we're going to do with the final version is add a lot of additional illustrations.
Oh, good.
So we'll have many more of those.
Yeah, because your waterfall one isn't in here that I could find, is it? That you showed, and I couldn't find it in the report, so. Okay, are there any other comments, Commissioner Roundtree?
I have a question. Do you take this document and by chance share it with any of the high schools or middle schools?
We don't normally do that, but we certainly could. That wouldn't be a problem. I think after we get the final document is when we'd want to do that.
With, I have a 24-year-old who's just about done with Cal Lutheran, and my daughter's 20. And having read this, I learned so much more about the city than I could have imagined, and I thought, "Well, I've been here 25 years. How about my son?" I asked Brandon, "What do you know?" You've got a great document here, and if I use the expression, there's such a great story to be told, and with the illustrations, hiking trails, our kids should know this. And who knows, maybe that age group of 24 to 40 will stay here a little bit longer.
There's a lot of reasons to stay here.
Well, I know that there's some books over at the Stagecoach Inn Museum that have been written about the history of the canal that are used in some of the schools. Marion Franklin wrote those, so. Now, there's a lot that people, I've lived here 41 years, but a lot of people say, "Gee, I've lived here 20 years and never been to the Stagecoach Inn or the Schumisch Museum." It's not that old, but it's a great idea. Commissioner Chappell?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Roundtree's comments. I think when the final draft comes back, this is something that we should push as a city to make available to the public, because there is a lot of hidden treasures in the city and the valley that people just don't see. And of all the presentations that I've been with, sitting on the commission, it's obviously Mr. Burgess and Mr. Rogers, that you really like what you do.
Yes, I do.
That was very exciting. And as also the Commissioner Roundtree, as far as the kids come back, we could start building a lot of those Chumash huts. And can we get that on the affordable housing plan?
We used to get the tulips for the one at the Stagecoach Inn Museum over in the Lake Sherwood.
Anyway, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Commissioner? No, there are no speaker cards at all on this item unless there's someone in the audience that would like to speak to it. You're welcome to, and then fill out a card. And this is Mr. Krasinski, and if you'd state your name and your city residence again, and you have five minutes.
For the record, Brian Krasinski, 12 faculty court, Thousand Oaks. I wasn't planning on saying anything because I actually saw the affordable housing advertisement actually in the A Court, so I didn't see this one covered, and I think that maybe the newspaper can do a little better job next time. I just wanted to make a commentary. My family and I, we've lived here now for 12 years. We originally lived, for all our lives, in Ontario, Canada. I got a job offer in Santa Monica, and this was the city we chose for the environmental aspects. We chose this one specifically, along with the issues of, you know, safety, safe communities, and we absolutely love this community. This is unbelievable. The environmental protection, the enhancement, and the enthusiasm of the staff really make us proud to be here. Kind of choked up about it. So keep doing what you're doing, because this is without question a world-class city. And a lot of my friends and colleagues back in planning departments in Ontario are watching and reading websites here, getting some great ideas from you. Maybe it's a revenue generator for you.
Thank you. I think a lot of us feel that way. It's nice to go out and travel, but it's so nice to come back home to Thousand Oaks and not see billboards and to see all the beautiful open space that surrounds our city, that it's a world-class. We moved here for the low-income housing. We first married 41 years ago, and I paid more for my last car than I did my first house. Anyway, back to the, is there any other discussion? Commissioner Ferris needs to add something.
Okay. Now, I wanted to wait to see if there were any speakers, because, I mean, I didn't have any questions of staff. I mean, I wanted to laud them for all of the great work that's been done, and Mr. Burgess ended up mentioning that, you know, there was a comprehensive update in 1996. You thought you did a pretty good job. I agree. I mean, it's a fantastic description of not only what is important to preserve and conserve within, in the community, but the set of policies are really sort of that statement of, this is the city that we want to be when it comes to conservation. And in some ways, the general plan, all of the elements, really do encompass that description of, this is the community that we want to be. We want to make sure the hillsides are protected from developments. We don't want to encroach on natural slopes. I get the opportunity to, after this meeting, go down to San Diego and for meetings, and in the daytime, when you drive down there, you see lots of hills, and on those hills, there are plenty of houses. And so, I mean, it's, it's just, I get an appreciation every time I go down there of what we didn't do here from the very beginnings, in the 60s and 70s and 80s. And every, you know, we saw in the housing element discussion, there were initiatives regarding keeping the amount of residential and commercial densities and the growth boundaries and open space protections and all those sorts of things, and they all fit together and weave together to make the community what it is, the very desirable community that we live in. And I, you know, I look at the redline versions of the policies, and they all look, you know, extremely appropriate to keep or modify as we've done or include these things. Some of the things I really do like about it is, I mean, I've sat on the commission back in the early 2000s, and the maps that we dealt with there were, you know, they're basically hand-drawn, they're very, very well-done by staff members, but the technology's there, and it certainly is there now, to make it much more accurate. And I really welcome the fact that at least the conservation element has those accurate maps. I don't know if the open space maps and others have those updated ones, or if they're coming, that's fantastic, too. And I know that in previous hearings, I know we've dealt with, say, a new development of eight houses, and we evaluate whether, where the placement of the lots will be will actually encroach on the wildlife corridors so that the movement of wildlife would come in there. And if we didn't care to make sure that that was something we looked at before these projects come in, it might be really easy to say, you know, the developers, their land, let them butt up all up against it, and those small effects separate wildlife populations, then you leave them in an island, and then they kind of die off in there. And also, in that meantime, the wildlife will start coming in and creeping into the urban areas as they are trying to move and migrate across those. So it's important from a, I mean, I really appreciate the comprehensive nature of the entire elements of the general plan and just how it's been laid out in the conservation element here. I just want to thank staff. I think it really is a great job. I'm glad to see a really comprehensive and wonderful update to it. It'll serve us very well over the next few decades.
Any other comments? Commissioner, excuse me, Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick comments. As Commissioner Ferris has noted, at the back of the report, just for the commission's knowledge, starting on packet page 225, we did include an underlying strikeout version of the policies, so you could very specifically understand what is proposed to remain and be changed. So again, that starts on packet page 225. And then also, these are the first two element updates that obviously are coming your way, but the next one in line is the safety element, so we're working on that. That was also last updated in 1996, followed most likely by the open space element, which was also last updated in 1996. So these are really the first two of four that we have coming your way, and you will probably be seeing those by the end of this calendar year. So there is more interesting issues for your review. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. No further discussion. We'll go on to the next item. And so when we review this, when we review the final document, it will be in color then? Inbound, so we can have it?
Correct. Actually, what we're going to be doing is improving the appearance of this particular element, including more photographs in a different graphic format. We'll be working with our city manager's office to make it a more attractive document because, as the commission noted, there's a lot of very interesting information here in terms of biology, cultural, historical landmarks, that is of great interest to the community, I think. And the format here is really, really appropriate to, how can I put it, improve than, you know, beyond just the narrative. So we will be doing that as well.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Burgess. Good job. Okay, we'll continue on with item seven, Community Development Department reports and referrals.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On packet page 234, you have the outline of your next meeting, which is on March 4th, and that will be the Planning Commission reorganization meeting. And that will be followed after a brief intermission by at least two cases that you will have before you, Coles Department store change in hours of operation and a case of improvements up in the North Ranch area. We may be adding another case to that as well, but you will be having those two cases. And then we're working on other cases for March and April. And then in terms of council items coming up that the commission has recently considered, the Batia case, which was appealed, was initially planned for the council agenda in late January, but that was continued to a date uncertain, so we don't know exactly when that will be considered by the city council. And then the New Home Company's appeal of the commission decision on the project near Mayfair Warwick will be heard by the city council on February 19th. And with that, I will just also mention that I'll be forwarding, as I commented on before, to the commission copies of the senior action management, or master plan, sorry, and the city's energy action plan, just as additional background for you to review before these elements come back to you again. Thank you.
And also, we should know that Mr. Tapking will be at the next meeting on March 4th. We'll need your attendance at the next meeting, yes. Okay? And minutes and resolutions, minutes and resol, do you want one motion or two? Two different motions? Okay. Motion to approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting January 7, 2013. Commissioner Tapking? Oh, I thought I'd let you make your last motion or something. Okay.
Motion to approve minutes.
Commissioner Ferris?
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. Motion to approve the resolutions from the planning commission meeting January 7, 2013. Commissioner Tapking? Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And are there any AB 1234 reports? Don't think so. And commission comments? Any, Commissioner Roundtree?
I don't know how much time we'll have at our next meeting with Mr. Tapking, and thanking him for his time.
We will, we will.
We will?
Yeah.
Then I will reserve my humor and comments for that night.
I mean, you can always say something right now if you'd like to, but there will be time during that.
Oh, no, I would rather have him think about what I'm going to say, and I'll also prepare a little bit more for it. But thank you, though, for sharing.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. I did, I just wanted to address some comments Mr. Kidway had brought up regarding minutes and those sorts of things, and I just wanted to share my comments on what he was bringing up. I don't know if we have the purview with the minutes, or if there's city council policy that sort of propagates it to all committees, but I do share his desire to see at least a little bit more description of the comments in the minutes, if that can possibly be forwarded. I do think it's important. These are, in fact, documents that we approve, and we say they're official representation of what happened at the meeting, and they're for public review, and I do think it's good to at least have some element of the description of whether it's pro or con or anything else, a little bit more than what's currently being done. It's then subjective as to whether that's enough, but the way I see it, I would like to see a little bit more description. He did mention something about the potential of an electronic version of the minutes, that there might be a link to the video of the meeting itself or of that commentary. I can't remember, was that a different city that was doing that, or?
Mr. Heer.
I thought he was referring to Moorpark, but I will say that you can go online and look at. look at a planning commission meeting and review it.
Absolutely. And I know that we do do that and I certainly think that that would be a welcome compliment if that's something that we were deciding to do. The one thing I always get concerned with is that these are documents that are for the entire public of all ranges, access to broadband media and ability to pay for those services so that they have access to know what their government is doing. A printed version of the minutes is generally the best way that we can make sure everybody has access to that. And I certainly want to at least make sure that we're cognizant of that as we think about doing that. So those are the nuggets I want to make sure kind of get pulled out and we think about in the future.
And I would also like to add, because I'm always confused in what to do when an applicant submits a lot of cards, and a lot of them will say for questions only on them. So maybe we really need to, with the changing of the chair, come up with something. Do we count those that say questions only or what do we do? Because it does depend on how many cards we have and how much time. And you can see it at the beginning of your agenda on the very first page, it tells you how many minutes for how many cards.
But how can you not count them?
Well, no, you can count, yeah. Do you count those if they're for questions only as part of that group from one to five? Or from six to 10? That's the thing, an applicant could have, you know, six or people and sometimes they do have four or five.
But if you don't count them into that, if somebody raises the question or a point earlier on, that may change the way that person wishes to respond.
Yeah. So I just, I've always counted all of them. I have been doing that all along and I thought that was appropriate.
I would say that is appropriate.
Okay, to count all of them.
Part of it is because you have to assume that because they've made their indication that they want to possibly speak and respond, that it's going to be a time period for that person, so you would have to...
Well, so many times those cards are within the 15 minutes, too.
Sure.
You know, so, yeah, yeah, that's what we've done. So I don't know, you know, it depends on, you know, it just, I've always taken it as part of the cards and if there have been, let's say, then there's always over five, if there's six to 10, then I give the other speakers four minutes.
Certainly, I would say that you exemplify how you should run the meeting with giving individuals an opportunity to speak. And if we go a little bit beyond, obviously, you're...
We've always been kind about that.
Exactly right.
Sometimes I panically panic, you know, and like having the meetings in the boardroom, it's hard because they can't see how much time they have to speak. And I know Mr. Kidway likes it there, but it is hard to control a meeting in that room because they don't see how much more time they have.
Right. And again, you know, part of this is the due process element of making sure the voices are heard, that you're considering this information, especially when it comes to public hearings where you want to make sure that you have the information when you weigh it, because if there's an appeal, you want to make sure that you have a good record, a solid record of what was done. And I know this was a little thing here today, but I went running after Brian because I want to make sure he gets the card.
Oh, the card, that's right.
Just because we want to keep that record, not that we would have it, but it's a good habit of making sure that we always keep that record. And today wasn't a hearing, but that's kind of the idea, that we want to make sure everyone is speaking and being heard. Excuse me. And again, I applaud you for how you do it because at the end of the day, we're not trying to cut people off, but we do have to run our meeting, too. We have that right to run the meeting efficiently as well.
And then it's also when there's a homeowner's group or someone representing the group, we've given them extra time. There's never been a problem with that, but so... Pardon?
We usually give a group, an identified group, 15 minutes.
Yes, the same is, yes, the 15 minutes, so. Okay.
Just for reference, you know, we do have the grid, this is on our agendas and it does say it sort of limits it down. Yeah, it sort of limits it to three minutes. And, you know, over the course of the past couple of years, Mr. Kidway, he's brought this to our attention a number of times and I think has alluded to this sometimes, that our grid is a little bit different than the city council grid.
It is, if you look at it.
It used to be, when I first came on the commission in 99, it used to be exactly the same. And so when you got to 11 to 15 speakers, it was three minutes. 16 to 20, it was two minutes. Above that, it was one minute. And that's, I think, still the current grid on at the city council.
This just says 16 plus is two minutes. But I think it was you that got them to change that.
That's exactly, because, I mean, and back then, you know, we had a lot of speakers coming through and, you know, people come in and it's a project that affects their neighborhood, they're nervous, they don't quite know all the policies and, you know, and it takes them, you know, 10 or 12 seconds to get through their name and city of residence to finally figure out what they do. And next thing you know, they're cut off and they're gone. And that's that, that was that element of sort of, we want to make sure that we're welcoming their input. We have to run it efficiently, but provide them the minimum amount they need to say what they need to tell us. And I think we said three minutes and that's, I think, worked well for us over these years. I'm glad that it's still here like this. So, I mean, I'm not sure, I think the way we're handling it with the current situation, I think achieves the goals. But just some of the things like in the minutes and how we make sure that what gets done and the access to that by the public, that's what we constantly just have to keep in mind.
But our minutes are minutes, which is really just putting down like in a meeting, you know, motions that are made and who seconded and if they were, you know, we don't follow that Robert's rules, but with a second, but that's really what minutes should be. You shouldn't put down a lot of discussion, public discussion.
No, they're supposed to be done, you know, in a quick synopsis, but the other thing, if you remember, especially when you were back in the commission in 99, and sometimes these meetings would go to 11 and beyond.
Oh, two in the morning.
And then you have all these people waiting and nobody has time to talk. So the, I think the system is set up pretty well.
Along those lines, that was, we weighed that, at least this is the way I felt, was that, you know, you have a public hearing because it's important to make sure that the public's business is done in public, the public has the opportunity to provide their input into that decision-making process. And sometimes, maybe it takes just a little extra time on our part to make sure that that's getting done well. And you know, the way it works is that if someone gets their three minutes, we really want to hear from them, somebody asks a question.
Yeah.
That's right.
And there's no time limit on that after that. So we know how to make sure that we get it, get that in there, but, you know, to make sure that the public knows, we least want to have, give you enough time to say what you want to say. And that's, I do think it's continuing, a continued sense of commitment to the public.
Yes, Mr. Town?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to respond to a couple of comments. First of all, tomorrow night on the city council agenda is the issue of minutes. So the issue that Mr. Kidway has brought up before this body and before the city council will be considered, there's a staff report, I will forward it to you as well. So the city clerk is taking the lead on that and the council will be debating it. The planning commission minutes, just so everybody knows, those are always available online through TO TV. You can click on and watch any of these proceedings via video. Our agendas, our staff reports, minutes are all online and goes back a number of years. So that's there for the public to review at any time. Also, at our last meeting, there were comments about the development activity report and making it a little bit more prominent, so we moved that so that now it's on the community development homepage and it's right there. It's titled Development Activity Reports. It's much easier to find, a little difficult to put it on the true city homepage, but on the department homepage, it's now right there. It used to be under a different link, so it's easier to find.
We always get an email.
Correct. But it'll just be that much easier for the public. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Then we'll adjourn the meeting to Monday, March 4, 2013, at 6:30 PM. Good night.
Tired of high gas prices? Thousand Oaks Transit is here to help you. We operate Monday through Friday, serving Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, and the Westlake area. Save big money and give TOT a ride. Thousand Oaks Transit, we're going places.
Is your business ready?
I'm ready.
I'm ready.
I'm ready to assist my community in the face of a disaster. I'm aware of the local hazards that could affect my business, and I have an emergency business plan.
We are in movement towards a culture of business preparedness. I have secured our office equipment and improved the security on all of our computers. My employees know what to do before, during, and after disaster.
We are taking steps to be proactive, not reactive. My business is registered with the VC Alert notifications, and I've reviewed my insurance policy with my agent.
I'm ready, because I went to ReadyVenturaCounty.org.
Get a kit, make a plan, be informed, today. Learn how at ReadyVenturaCounty.org.
If you live in the high-risk wildfire areas of Southern California, known as the urban interface, you also live with the year-round possibility of a wildland brush fire.
Southern California Fire Chiefs urge you to take personal responsibility and prepare now for this year's fire season. A new program can help. It's called Ready, Set, Go.
To get ready, a free wildfire action plan will help teach you to better prepare your home to be more fire resistant.
Are you set when fire weather is predicted? Monitor your local news for updates, and prepare yourself and your family by having a disaster plan and checklist.
When the fire comes, don't wait for your local police officers to give you an evacuation order. Leave early and let your local firefighters work to save your home.
For your free copy of the Ready, Set, Go Wildfire Action Plan, visit your local fire department's website or your local fire station.
Free mulch is available to the residents of Thousand Oaks. This combination of leaves and wood chips helps maintain moisture and prevents weed growth. Bring a shovel and some sturdy plastic bags to the Goble Senior Adult Center, located at 1385 East Janes Road. For more information, please dial 805-449-SAVE.
Perkins!
Yeah, Coach?
It's time to get back in the game.
I don't know, Coach. I feel kinda worn out.
Yeah, kid, I've noticed. That's why you need to get with the program.
The program?
Yeah, the Nike Reuse a Shoe Program. That's where people can clean out their closets and bring all their old athletic shoes to any one of the approved sites for recycling. You see, instead of going to a landfill, they get ground up and used to make brand-new athletic surfaces, like soccer fields, basketball courts, and running tracks. It's good for the environment and benefits the whole community as well.
Gosh, so how can I find out more?
Just call the City of Thousand Oaks at 805-449-SAVE. Or look 'em up on the web at www.toaks.org. Perkins, I know you're a team player, so get back in the game with the Nike Reuse a Shoe Program.
Okay, Coach, I'm outta here.
Ah, that kid. He may not be MVP, but he's a real contributor.
Are you ready to adopt? Are you ready to adopt an oak tree?
I'd like 58.
You like 58?
Oh, pick me, picking, pick me. Pick me, picking, pick me. What do you think of it? Does it look good? You love that one? That's a good one, isn't it? It looks great. Honor someone special by naming an oak tree in their honor or memory while helping to preserve 15,000 acres of Thousand Oaks open space. There are four oak tree adoption categories, from a donor-name plaque that is displayed at the Civic Arts Plaza for all theater patrons to see, to individual recognition by the Thousand Oaks City Council. Once adopted, your oak tree will be cared for by the city or Caneo Recreation and Park District landscapers, depending on the location of the tree. Proceeds from your donation help to preserve and acquire additional open space in Thousand Oaks. If you would like to adopt an oak tree, call the City of Thousand Oaks or check out the city's website at t-oaks.org.
Name a monthly.
Adopt an oak tree today and help preserve our open space for generations to come.
The number one problem that we have is people wandering continuously. As we're trying to locate them, they're continuing to move further and further away from our location. Today, we're looking for Trevor. He's eight years old. He's got brown hair. He's about 52 inches tall. He's wearing a red T-shirt, short brown pants, tennis shoes. Medina and Holden, we're gonna start on the east end and work in. And then, Oliver, Cone and Bachelor, you two are gonna start at the Los Robles Trailhead and you're gonna work up so that we cover the perimeter. Okay, grab your gear and let's get going. So, the idea is to teach them to stay put in one spot and to remain calm so that we can find them quicker. Trevor!
Trevor, can you hear me?
Oftentimes, when children become frightened and they hear searchers calling their name or calling for them, they think that they're in trouble. Trevor!
Trevor, can you hear me?
And it's important to educate them that they're not in trouble, that we're there to help them, we're their friends, and that if they hear their name being called, to yell out as loud as they can. It's a good idea, anytime you go on a hike, to carry a whistle with you. And also, the whistle is obviously to signal rescuers so that we can locate you. It's easy to hear the whistle. The animals that you'll find in this area will not hurt you. If you hear things, not to be frightened, make a lot of noise, and chances are, they're more afraid of you and they're gonna run away. But what you might think is an animal may be one of us coming to find you. And if you remain quiet, we're not gonna hear or see you. Make yourself large. Oftentimes, we use helicopters to locate our subjects from the air, and they can't see somebody who's standing straight up or standing in the bushes. If you hear some helicopter overhead, it's important to step out into an open area, away from the tree, and lay down on the ground and spread your arms and legs out, make yourself as big as possible so that you're visible from the air. There's a lot of people out looking for you, and when you hear people calling your name, not to be frightened, you're not in trouble. Those are just a lot of people that care about you.
What happened?
Are you okay? Have you been lost? Did you not hurt or any, right?
They're out there to help find you, bring you home safely.
from your car and locking the door. Thieves use a variety of methods to get into cars. First and foremost, they're gonna target the cars that are left unlocked. Other methods they use might be a slim jim or some kind of pry tool. They may even use a rock or a brick from your yard. One method that you wouldn't have thought of is a simple porcelain chip like this. Best way to avoid being a victim of this kind of crime: lock your car, but also remove the valuables before you go inside. For more information, contact our Crime Prevention Bureau at the Thousand Oaks Police Department. Thank you.
Los Robles Greens located in beautiful Thousand Oaks. Overlooking the breathtaking 18th hole, the strikingly designed banquet and community center is the perfect atmosphere to host weddings, receptions, banquets, corporate meetings, and any other special events. Whether it's formal or casual, the staff at Los Robles is committed to providing you with everything necessary to make yours an event to always remember. Los Robles Greens. To book our banquet facilities, visit us online. To book our banquet facilities, visit us online at losroblesgreens.com.
Is this what comes to mind when you think of public transportation? Thousand Oaks Transit is new, improved, and ready to serve you more than ever. TOT uses clean burning and low polluting natural gas buses, complete with bike racks, spacious seating, and bilingual drivers. TOT services are offered Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, and Westlake area with convenient stops at the City Transportation Center, Civic Arts Plaza, and many shopping centers. So pick up a bus schedule to find a convenient route near you. Next time you need to be somewhere local, let TOT do the driving for you. Thousand Oaks Transit: We're Going Places. Tired of high gas prices? Thousand Oaks Transit is here to help you. We operate Monday through Friday, serving Thousand Oaks, Newbury Park, and the Westlake area. Save big money and give TOT a ride. Thousand Oaks Transit: We're Going Places.
Perkins!
Yeah, Coach?
It's time to get back in the game!
I don't know, Coach. I feel kinda worn out.
Yeah, kid, I've noticed. That's why you need to get with the program!
The program?
Yeah, the Nike Reuse a Shoe Program. That's where people can clean out their closets and bring all their old athletic shoes to any one of the approved sites for recycling. You see, instead of going to a landfill, they get ground up and used to make brand-new athletic surfaces, like soccer fields, basketball courts, and running tracks. It's good for the environment and benefits the whole community as well.
Gosh, so how can I find out more?
Just call the city of Thousand Oaks at 805-449-SAVE. Or look 'em up on the web at www.toaks.org. Perkins, I know you're a team player, so get back in the game with the Nike Reuse a Shoe Program.
Okay, Coach, I'm outta here.
Ah, that kid. He may not be MVP, but he's a real contributor.
There I was in another unbalanced relationship. I could borrow anything I wanted from my library unless it was in the reference section or nailed down, and what was I giving back? It was unhealthy. Now I've joined Friends of Libraries. I'm helping them raise money for children's summer reading programs, author events, computers. I feel good. Join your Friends of Libraries chapter. Just call your local library and they'll tell you how. This message is brought to you by Friends of Libraries USA. If you haven't been to the library lately, you're overdue.
Hey, welcome NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look.
At all things NASA.
Oh, that's gonna be smart.
Up next, NASA Edge.
On TO TV, government television for the city of Thousand Oaks.
Astronomy. The natural science and study of celestial objects. Discover how amateur astronomers and NASA stare at the sun and other objects safely and scientifically, all while avoiding the dreaded ocular ring. Next on NASA Edge.
Welcome to NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
We're inside the Tucson Convention Center in Tucson, Arizona.
For the Arizona Science and Astronomy Expo.
This is an exciting two-day event where we have a lot of people from the general public, kids learning about science and astronomy education.
Yeah, it's great for amateur astronomers. You can come out, see telescopes, work with them, talk to the people that made them, and actually, you know, advance in your astronomical efforts.
In fact, NASA has a big presence here. We have a number of booths here. We have the Space Weather Action Center from NASA Goddard. We have the James Webb Telescope booth. We have the Solar Dynamics Observatory booth, and astronaut Don Pettit. On today's show, we're going to be talking to the general public, getting sort of their feel of what's passionate about them in terms of science and astronomy. We're going to be talking to some of the vendors here, and hopefully if the weather's nice, I think it's cooperating right now, we'll get to go outside and actually look at the sun.
We're here under the hot blazing Tucson, Arizona sun, talking to Dr. Stephen Ramsden about solar observing or solar astronomy. Tell me about what you're doing here today, Stephen.
We are setting up and have set up narrowband solar telescopes for the public and anyone who's interested to come by and look at the sun and see the magnetic ferocity going on on the surface all the time.
Is there actual solar ferocity taking place today?
You better believe it. The sun's chromosphere is active as usual. There's a gigantic floating prominence about 30 times the size of the Earth off the edge of the sun. There are several sunspots, and the chromosphere is alive with heat and detail right now. Every day it's something different. There's stuff shooting off the side. Yesterday morning, there was an eruptive prominence that just blew off the edge. And today, the prominence we see on the side today is something I've never seen before. I mean, when I started, we were in solar minimum, so it looked kind of like a cheese pizza only. And then after, it kept getting more pepperonis and green peppers added to it. And now we're kind of up to everything meat lovers pizza. It's just a fantastic thing to look at.
Well, in your daily life, I mean, how often do you observe solar activity?
At least four times a week, and I take my outreach program to middle schools or high schools all year long, and have done that for the last five years. And we look at the sun at least twice a week with 500 to 1,000 kids, and by myself, two or three more times per week.
You have an outreach effort aimed at kids, right?
It's centered in Atlanta, Georgia, and I go to all the southeastern states myself. And this year, we opened it up to 17 countries worldwide. So I have people just like Dan and my buddy Randy here in Tucson that brought their own telescopes for the Charlie Bates Solar Astronomy Project to set up here and let these local residents look at the sun.
What got you interested in looking at the sun? Because obviously, I mean, your parents always tell you not to stare into the sun. I basically got these protective glasses. I can look only at the sun, but I can't even see you right now. But what drew you into solar observing?
It's different every day, and the main thing for me with the outreach is that the students are already in school during the day. There's no need for a lot of fuss and bother of getting them out somewhere. The kids are already there. It's just a natural for me because since I was a little kid, I've just wondered, what is that up there and why is it there? And how are we going around it? And how do they bring us life? And all these wonderful things you ask about the star that's just right around the corner.
So tell us, you like studying the sun and the solar system?
Yeah, because the sun is too hot.
What's your favorite planet?
Saturn.
Saturn has all the rings around it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So what do you want to be when you grow up?
A teacher.
Very good. See, that's the perfect profession, being a teacher. So Jennifer, why are you here today?
My son really loves space, so we decided to come out and see what it's about.
So Jacob, what do you want to be when you grow up?
I want to be a space scientist.
A space scientist. What would you like to do in space?
Study the stars.
Tell me, what do you like about the sun?
I like the flames on it.
What about you, Mom? What did you think about seeing the sun through the telescope?
It was pretty neat. I hadn't seen it before through a telescope. He has a big telescope at home. I haven't quite figured out how to use all of it, so we haven't been able to do that. So it was really neat to see.
Well, Jacob will be able to teach you in a couple of years.
We're here with Michelle from Celestron. How is the expo going for you guys?
It's been really good. We've had a lot of steady traffic, a lot of young people, a lot of families, so we've been really happy with the turnout.
With the new families, are you seeing that you're getting actually some new amateur astronomers developed even today?
I think so. I really do. A lot of people have been coming by, and the kids are really excited about the products and astronomy itself. Celestron's definitely big into outreach. We do a lot of star parties at schools. We go and set up telescopes and bring the kids out and let them view Saturn and the moon.
Now, I've heard this term a lot. You're going to have to explain this to me. Star parties? What are these? I mean, I've not been invited to any star parties, so I'm just curious. What is a star party?
Well, you're missing out. You know, we set up the telescopes and we have people come out and basically take a look at the stars and the universe and help get them inspired and hopefully get some new people into the hobby.
I'll tell you what, I'm very curious about these star parties. It looks like either I'm going to have to start one or find one and join it because it sounds like a great event.
It is. It is. Definitely always a lot of fun.
So what brought you both to the Tucson conventions today?
Well, my husband is just now getting into astronomy. He bought a telescope a couple of months ago, so he heard about it and wanted to come down.
Now, how is your telescope different than one that you have?
Well, mine is much smaller.
Now, what were the cool things or cool features you saw the sun today?
Well, we just saw that there was some activity there on the sun. It looks like they had some eruptions.
And tell us about the experience inside the convention center today.
Well, we've seen two speakers so far, and both were very entertaining. One was more facts and fun, and the other one was a fun story, Mayan's and the end of the world in 41 days.
Wait a minute, the world's going to end in 41 days?
Not according to him, no.
Awesome. We avoided Mayan calendar catastrophe and learned about the new field of meteorite hunting, a scientific win-win.
How do amateur and commercial meteorite hunters contribute to science?
It's a very important aspect of this science. The meteorites have to get to the scientists in order for them to be studied because the amount of information contained in one rock is phenomenal. So meteorite hunters, we're kind of the grunts, if you will. We're the ones who are out in the field looking for them, bringing them back in. That is obviously the most, that is the most obvious way that meteorite hunters assist scientists and is getting the samples to the lab to be studied. And when we're out in the field within a couple of hours or 24 hours of a fall, it preserves the data. The data is not terrestrialized. The meteorite is not terrestrialized. Not only with new finds, but with cold finds such as what Sonny has found in the past. He's found meteorites that are so rare, people haven't seen them before. That is a whole nother dataset to add to the scientific knowledge and database.
Recover these meteorites, get them out of the environment, get them into the scientific hands to where this material now is now being studied. The environment's not ruining the meteorites, it's just preserving them.
We could not do the work that we do without the meteorite hunters and the amateur collectors simply because as scientists, we do not have the time to be out looking for meteorites. And that is probably the only negative downside from a purely scientific standpoint is that meteorites cost money, where an amateur astronomer is more than willing to give their data that they've collected. And so that's the only negative side of it. But I do want to stress that we could not do our jobs. We could not study the rich history that can be found in these rocks without people going out and finding them.
May I weigh in on this because this is a topic that's very close to my heart? Everybody understands that if meteorite collection on a commercial basis is done properly, it benefits everyone. So we go out in the field, we find a new meteorite. It's not really worth anything financially as is compared to its financial value if it is properly analyzed and classified and given a name. So I don't mean to sound too self-serving here, but we find a meteorite, we take it to CMS and say, "Could you classify this, please? And in exchange for your valuable work, we will donate part of the piece to your permanent collection." So they get an important sample, which they get to keep for all time, and our meteorite then becomes recognized in the literature, and then people go, "Oh, it's a real meteorite. It was found there. It's not something that somebody just bought at a rock show and pretended that it was found." That's one of the reasons that we work so closely with academia, partly because it's the right thing to do, but we want meteorite collecting to be done in a responsible manner so private collectors and commercial dealers and academia all benefit. There's no reason not to work together and cooperate on this issue.
Now, Don, I understand that you work with the James Webb Telescope. Can you give us an update on what's going on with James Webb right now?
Sure. First of all, at the University of Arizona, we're building one of the four instruments. It's called the Near Infrared Camera. And we're really excited because everything we've worked for over the last decade has now been assembled, and it's undergoing cryogenic testing at Lockheed Martin, just as though it was in space.
What is it going to capture when James Webb is flying?
There are a couple of general principles about the infrared. One is that longer wavelengths, which infrared is, goes through murky material like gas and dust in the universe, so we can see how stars are born, how planets are born, how entire galaxies are born, even though their surroundings might be a little opaque to visible light. Also, James Webb Space Telescope has sometimes been called the first light machine, which means you can see the light of the first objects that was ever formed in the universe. And it's been stretched into the infrared by the expansion of space over all this time.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, Doc. Are you telling me that you built a time machine?
That's exactly right. The farther you look, the older the light, but the younger the information is. It's sort of like getting a letter in the mail. It takes a while to deliver it, and when you get it, you're reading about something your friend did in the past. Every NASA project has a science and a mission component, but also an education component. So I'm lucky because I get to be on the science team that helps build this near-infrared instrument, but also I'm leading the education effort that's connected to our instrument. And we work very closely with the Girl Scouts of the USA, and for 10 years now have been training adult leaders in the very principles that make our telescope and instrument work.
Are they going to come up with a special cookie when James Webb launches that they can sell from the Girl Scouts?
You can already buy a special cookie cutter for the James Webb Space Telescope. Yeah.
How awesome is that? That's a great idea.
And it's even better because our instrument has what are called optical benches, a platform on which everything is mounted. It's made of beryllium, and it's engraved on the side, "Go Girl Scouts." And so the Girl Scouts are literally going a million miles into space with this instrument.
That's fantastic. Now, I imagine that's part of why you're here. How's the crowd been today in terms of the expo? A lot of good conversations, a lot of excitement about James Webb?
Yeah, in fact, there's some people here who have worked on James Webb Telescope that I've never met. They worked on the optics and software and other things. It's especially exciting to see the young people come and actually look at themselves in the infrared camera and be willing to do experiments with some of the materials we have here. And I like that a lot because in six years from now, those young kids will be high schoolers or in college, and they'll remember back and maybe be able to explain to their friends what this was all about. Or maybe they'll be using the data that comes from the telescope.
We need some kind of telescope to look into my brain and figure out why I can't understand how complex this process actually is.
Blair, have you ever seen an ocular ring?
No.
Check it out.
Oh, all right.
Check this out.
I'm not seeing anything. Ocular ring? I'm not getting anything. Just straight sun.
Ocular ring.
I don't, what are you talking about?
Word on the street is I'm talking with Bern, who's a rocket scientist.
Oh, of course I am. Look at the NASA right there, the rocket scientist.
Can hardly argue with the T-shirt. But anyway, seriously, you're a student here in Arizona studying astronomy?
Yeah, I'm studying astronomy and physics here at the University of Arizona. I'm a freshman and from Michigan, actually. Came down here because I heard that the program is just phenomenal out here.
How did you get interested in astronomy?
I've been interested in astronomy since I was a little kid. I'd just look at the stars and just be amazed at how little we are in comparison. And soon it just took off, and I just kept learning about it, reading books, and just it became a large passion for me, so.
What are you looking forward to most here at the expo?
I'm actually really looking forward to listening to some of the really profound speakers that are here at the convention, such as Don Pettit. He is an astronaut who served several missions aboard the International Space Station. It's just going to be very interesting listening to him.
You're studying astronomy. Now, what do you plan to do once you get out of school?
Students who go through and study astronomy and physics go and become an astronomer, which is very interesting, but I might take a different route. I think that the amateur astronomy business is on the uprise, and there's so many opportunities out there for the amateur astronomy business. So who knows down the road? So who knows down the road, I could be owning a company like one of these out here, so.
You realize you're obligated to provide free telescopes to NASA Edge if you're successful in that endeavor.
I don't know about that one.
So why are you here at the Tucson Convention Center today?
I'm learning a lot about astronomy today. I'm hanging out with some really great astronomers that are in a club, so I'm trying to fit in and learning a lot.
I even know some of the few that she's talking about, yeah. No, we're here to visit several of the vendors that I've known and spoken with for many years and get to meet and greet them and maybe even buy some of their products. You never know.
So pretty much what I understand is you're keeping him out of trouble.
I am keeping him out of trouble. I'm keeping him focused on the fun stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, what have you learned since you've been here today?
Oh, I learned a lot about the sun. There was a really great presentation about the sun from NASA and I learned a lot about solar flares and saw some beautiful images.
So tell us, what are you doing here today?
Well, we decided to come out and show the people what we have to offer from the sun point of view from NASA. And we knew that this audience would be a good audience because they love astronomy and that's why they're here.
And this is sort of like the Mecca for solar astronomy, isn't it?
It is. Tucson has, you know, the great skies, of course, and there's some observatories, Kip Peak and Mountain Lemon and so forth. And it just has attracted a lot of astronomers.
It's just amazing how NASA is involved in studying the sun and we're learning so much every day.
Yeah, in the past, say, 30 years, it's been just huge leaps forward. And when I started with SOHO 15 years ago, the images were, you know, about this size and now they're, from STO, they're five feet by five feet. And with that and with faster picture taking, we're taking an image every 10 seconds with STO, we're seeing things we could never see before and that's exciting. People get excited about it. And people don't even know anything about the sun that see some of those movies that I show and they're online all the time. They're amazed because they're beautiful and yet they're interesting and they're science and all that good stuff.
What are some of the missions that we can see down the road for looking at the sun?
Okay, well, there's a couple. MMS, that's gonna look at the magnetosphere which responds to these storms from the sun. Then there's also Solar Orbiter, which is gonna get very close to the sun. And then there's Solar Probe, which will also get very close to the sun. In fact, about 10 million miles from the sun, which nothing's ever gotten that close. Of course, the big technological challenge is how can you shield something with that kind of intense heat? But I think they're well on their way to doing it.
You're gonna be seeing the outreach from STO over the next five, 10 years because we're never gonna stop studying the sun.
That's right. It seems like it's there and we're learning more and more and yeah, there seems to be a lot of interest in continuing that.
So what made you fly all the way from Tennessee to come to this expo?
Yeah, so I heard that this was gonna be Tucson's, you know, first science and astronomy conference here. And being, you know, Tucson, you know, having so much astronomy, so much science going on, I just wanted to come out and actually be a part of the very first astronomy and science conference here.
Now, are you an amateur astronomer yourself?
Yes, sir. I'm an astro photographer and I've been doing imaging for several years now. And I find it to be such a joy and learning so much about the universe that we live in.
Now, what made you get into science and astronomy?
Well, what made me got into it is that my son, at an early age, he wanted to be an astronaut. And so I wanted to basically, you know, take him to places where he can learn more about space. And so we started going to star parties. We went to John F. Kennedy Space Center. And as he started to get involved in it, I found out that I had a love for space as well. And so his interest became my hobby.
Now, I understand that what you're doing here is sort of astronomy, but basically you're focusing on one of our old favorites, the Space Weather Action Center. Have the kids really gotten into that? Have they enjoyed predicting space weather?
Oh, yeah. It was really funny. We had one little girl that came over and we said, "So, do you wanna learn about the sun?" She said, "Of course." And then we had one little boy that actually did a space weather report and then afterwards, he had so many questions about the sun. I pulled up the Space Weather Media Viewer and we looked at the different images and I answered questions. And he saw where there was a coronal mass ejection today. And then later on, he came back and I said, "Come here, look what I found." And there was a solar flare. And one man that came over and he said, "Wow, I don't get images like that on my telescope. What observatory are you using?" And I said, "Solar dynamics."
Nice. I would've said it's NASA Edge's special telescope.
So Andy, how you feeling right now?
I'm a little tired, but I'm actually very, very excited by what we've been able to pull off here. It's been a very, very good event. I think we've brought a lot of new people into the show. From what I've heard from everybody else, everyone's very excited about it.
Yeah, I was really amazed that not only the amateur astronomers are here, but a lot of the kids are here, too.
Yeah, we've made a very big point to go out in the community around Tucson, Phoenix, Arizona, and get with the schools, get with the outreach programs and really start to pull the kids in. We don't want kids just coming in and looking at telescopes and mounts. What we wanted them to do is actually come in and experience planetariums, experience weather stations, experience other ancillary areas of science and give them a firsthand taste of what astronomy really is too. And hopefully eventually they kind of realize that there are some connections between these two and they'll develop into astronomy at a later date.
What do you see this expo in the future?
The expo in the future, I hope, is gonna grow. We've only had about six to eight months to actually get this expo together. You know, we've done a wonderful job with all our volunteers and stuff getting out here and helping us out. And I think next year, this is, we're gonna be at least twice as big. We're definitely gonna be doing this now every year. We're very excited that this, you know, has sort of worked here in Tucson. I've had a few sleepless nights wondering if we were gonna get somebody through the door. I think we've had thousands of people coming through the door. And of course, the first thing we're gonna do Monday is start sitting down and picking a date for next year and start working on it all over again.
Hey, come on, let's go. Are they real?
Oh, yeah. Totally legitimate.
I tell you what, we've come to an end at the Arizona Science and Astronomy Expo. We've had a wonderful time here.
Yeah, it's been great. It's been an awesome experience with lots of astronomy and lots of science and lots of exposition.
Exposition?
Well, it's an expo.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, the public has truly enjoyed it, just talking to all the people, all the kids, all the parents, even the vendors. What a great time for the first annual event.
Yeah, first annual, hope to be more. And most of all, lots of new astronomers probably developed here at the expo.
I tell you what, let's wrap things up. I'm really worried about your finger because it's shaking.
It's good. No, it's fine. Marshall through.
Okay. Well, you're watching NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
Let's go to the hospital.
Let's get this checked out.
Today, I coined a new phrase about our sun by looking at that problem. I call it magnetosphereance. How do you feel about that?
Wait, now, you did not coin that term. I've been using that term for years, for years. You probably, no, this is the best news I've ever heard. So basically, finally, all my efforts of preaching magnetosphereance have seeped their way through the ether, down to Atlanta, into your cerebrum, and are now making a spontaneous appearance by you here at the conference.
Magnetosphereance is my own term. We came upon it together, I think, because we're just two great minds involved in solar astronomy.
Well, I will certainly agree with that. Well, we have it here, confirmation that magnetosphereance is not only taking place in the mind of the co-host, but also in Dr. Stephen Ramston, who's clearly an expert in solar observing. Well, I tell you what, we'll do a lucrative deal amongst ourselves to get--
Talk to my lawyer.
It looks like I'll get hedged out of this as well. Anyway, you're watching NASA Edge, an inside and outside look at all things NASA. I'm really serious. How did you come upon this term?
My wife thought it up, to be honest with you.
That's three people that are involved.
Welcome to NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
We're at a top-secret location at NASA Johnson Space Center.
Building 220.
Here for the XHAB competition.
Well, we're about to see the University of Maryland deploy their concept as part of the XHAB Academic Innovation Challenge.
Don't fear the turtle.
Why would you fear a turtle?
Let's just go check him out.
Turtles are nice. They're cute and they're solid and robust and compact.
Hey, welcome NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look.
At all things NASA.
Hey, we're here with Tracy Gill, Deputy Project Manager for the Habitat Demonstration Unit. So Tracy, tell me a little bit about the XHAB competition.
It's an academic innovation challenge where we funded three different university teams to build a version of an inflatable loft, which the loft is gonna be a habitat for the Habitat Demonstration Unit. The Habitat Demonstration Unit hard shell has kind of a laboratory, so together with the habitat and laboratory, we'll make the first version of our deep-space habitat configuration.
Now, how were those three schools chosen for the competition?
We had an announcement in the summer of 2010 where we asked university teams to apply for how they would run a program to conduct the XHAB challenge. So it's not just that we're gonna build something and they had to integrate it into their curriculum and they had to follow a systems engineering process and then they had to actually build the product and deliver it.
So Gary, what are some of the criteria you're looking for in judging?
It's kind of a three-step process. First is the inflation, timed inflation, how easy will it be to inflate it out in the desert and so forth. Today, we're at day two, the second phase is the interior outfitting. How well do they utilize the space? How functional is it? Is it something that would be comfortable for the crew out at Desert Rats as well as for future missions? How well do they incorporate that?
For example, there's four beds in Maryland to have. So would you go in there and just sleep there for an hour or two just to see what it's like?
It's definitely a possibility. That might not be a bad idea for the judges to do that, huh?
I know you're an intern here at NASA Johnson Space Center this summer, but you were also on the Oklahoma State University's design team. What are some of the challenges that you faced?
You know, one of the biggest challenges is how do you get it to deploy without touching it or moving it? You know, that was a big requirement for NASA. It has to be autonomous and we worked really hard to try and make that happen. For the most part, it did work, but our biggest challenge was when we were coming down, when we're stowing, our beams kind of wanted to bow out a little bit and that kind of hindered the stowing process. But that's why we're engineers, we're trying to figure out ways to solve problems like that. I mean, this is a great way for your students to get that hands-on experience.
Yes. You know, at the University of Maryland, we're always trying to find ways to get our students hands-on because for a lot of students, that's a prime learning mode. You know, you learn by doing as opposed by having someone tell you how to do it. And so we're always looking for student projects and this was a wonderful one.
There's gonna be many parameters on which will be judged, some of them more obvious than others. Like the main parameter is the stowed volume. So when the habitat is all closed and collapsed versus when it's completely expanded. So the ratio between these two volumes is important. Also, the mass that the habitat weighs on Earth here is a critical parameter.
I think I read something where it does have to maintain the inflated state for a certain amount of time.
Leak rate is what you're probably referring to, which means once you inflate the habitat and you cut off the air supply, how long does it stay up? That is going to be probably one of the most challenging parameters which will be judged on.
Do these noises in the background make you nervous when it comes to leak rate?
No, because I know pretty well where they're bolting. If they were bolting anywhere else, I would be nervous.
Now, are there other rules, like don't run with scissors in the hab when it's inflated? I mean, is that--
Actually, there's a fun fact. When there was a discussion on safety exits and we were a little bit undecided on where to place our safety exits, someone on our team proposed, "But don't we just give a knife to all the astronauts and in case of emergency, they'll just cut their way out?" Obviously, that would never work, but it was funny enough.
Each of the teams has the same basic parameters to satisfy, but they've solved them in different ways. For instance, the Oklahoma State team last week built a two-floor loft. This team has built a one-floor loft that's a little bit more compact.
Now, I don't know if you know this, but so there's three teams, three schools. So next week is Wisconsin. Oklahoma State won first, Maryland's this week. There's a fourth week that was added to it. And I believe that the co-host is actually right now in the works, building his own hab, second floor. You think there's room to maybe look at his?
It's probably a small one if it's for him, so it's probably okay.
Wouldn't it take that long to build, would it?
No, no. Piece of cake.
So next year, we're gonna build another habitat--
Wonderful.
--but not inflatable this time.
Okay.
They've asked us to build what they call HDU Lite, which is like the habitat on the bottom.
Right.
This one is one-piece and it takes special convoys to get it from here to Arizona. So they've asked us to design a habitat that can fit into a standard shipping container in pieces. So we have a modular design where you can unbolt it into three sections, fit in one shipping container and put it on a truck and go.
One question I do have, through the rumor mill, I have not confirmed this. What were you guys thinking when you included a disco ball on the inside of your hab?
We do have some pretty eccentric people on our team. I think it might even been the professors doing--
This is highly questionable.
I don't wanna speculate on anything, but I think it was maybe just a last-minute deal to show a little bit of humor, you know?
And they will also be debuting the polyester spacesuits as well.
Yeah, parachute pants and all. We're going, we're throwing back, yeah.
Well, the XHAB challenge is a wrap.
And it's been a great week seeing the University of Maryland deploy their Habitat Demonstration Unit.
And we want to congratulate all the schools that actually submitted designs for the challenge.
And let's run through the finalists one more time.
We have Oklahoma State University, the University of Maryland, and the University of Wisconsin.
And the winner is?
The University of Wisconsin.
And the next time we see their habitat deployed, it will be at Black Point Lava Flow, Arizona for Desert Rats 2011.
So until next time, you're watching NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
Hey, do badgers live out in the desert?
That might be a little tricky. Yeah, we'll have to check on that. Talk to a zoologist.
Welcome to NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
Hey, we're here at NASA Langar Research Center in Hampton, Virginia, and we're gonna be talking about Discover AQ.
And I'm hoping to actually discover what this massive acronym Discover stands for in the process.
Yeah, in a few minutes, I'll be talking to Jim Crawford, who's the principal investigator, and I'm gonna ask him that very same question.
And I'm gonna be flying on the P-3, so I'll be able to ask some of the other researchers what it stands for as well.
You're flying on what?
The P-3, one of the planes flying as part of Discover AQ.
How'd you get that gig?
Well, it's not who you know, it's what-- no, it's not what you know, it's who you know.
Well, I tell you what, well, see, just right then and there, that kind of scares me because did you let them know about the magnetosphereance level that you produce? Because there's a lot of instruments onboard that plane and if you corrupt the data, the whole mission's a wash.
I honestly thought the health form would rule out the entire flight. So I think they were more focused on that. But I'm also stopping at the Beltsville, Maryland ground station. So I'll ask them there, too, so.
Well, I tell you what, you prepare for that, I'll go talk to Jim. You're watching NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
This guy's training whistle blowing here. Hey, welcome NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look.
At all things NASA.
Hey, we're here with Jim Crawford, the principal investigator for Discover AQ. And Jim, what's Discover AQ stand for?
It's a fairly tortured acronym, but Discover AQ stands for deriving information on surface conditions from vertically resolved and column observations relevant to air quality.
Sounds like a dissertation.
There'll be enough information out of this project to cover many dissertations. The number of students involved and scientists, we expect a lot of papers and results to come out of this.
That kind of gives the big picture. What's Discover AQ all about?
Well, Discover AQ came from a realization at NASA that we have satellites that can see constituents in the atmosphere that have to do with air quality, but can't see them in a way that's good enough to ascertain what's happening at the surface where people have been exposed to poor air quality. From a regulatory standpoint, the EPA and other regulators want to understand what's happening right here where you and I are standing. They're not even interested as high as maybe a few thousand feet above our heads. So trying to protect health is about what you're breathing now, not about what's present higher in the atmosphere.
And satellites have a tough time detecting that here.
Well, pollution aloft versus pollution at the surface is difficult for satellites because they're looking down from space through the entire atmosphere.
Right.
And so they're measuring the total amount of a constituent throughout that column. Within that column, the pollution is distributed and trying to determine how much of it is at low versus aloft is a particularly vexing problem. The satellite collects that one piece of information, that total amount in the atmosphere. But how do we tease apart the way it's distributed? And you have to put yourself in different vantage points to be able to do that.
To cover those different vantage points, I've put together a few crewed models to illustrate the assets that you might find at a particular ground station. The first vantage point we get from the sun photometer, which is run here by Dr. Xavier. The instrument actually looks directly through the column of atmosphere directly at the sun.
Basically, we know the energy at the top of the atmosphere very precisely in discrete wavelengths that are basically windows for aerosols. This little device measures the energy coming in at the bottom of the atmosphere and the difference is due to either absorption or scattering by particles in the atmosphere. And we come up with a quantity we call aerosol optical depth.
Looking at pollution, what types of pollution are we looking at? Are this aerosol gases?
Well, from a regulatory standpoint, there are two things that are regulated very heavily and that's particulate matter, or we call it aerosols in the atmosphere, and particularly the small aerosols, things that when you breathe can reach deep into your lungs. Think of it as a natural secondhand smoke.
Right.
And then ozone. Ozone is not emitted in pollution, but it results from the chemical outplay of the degradation of emissions. And so ozone is a highly reactive gas. We tend to think of it as the thing in the stratosphere that protects us from ultraviolet light, but down low near the surface, it's a reactive gas that when you ingest it into your lungs, it reacts with tissues and causes damage.
Right.
Not just to people, but to ecosystems. Agricultural productivity is also degraded by the presence of ozone.
Another asset is the untethered ozone sand, "sand" being the French word for science. We release this ozone sand into the same column of atmosphere. Ooh, I guess I should have thought about how to recover that.
So what happens with the ozone sands is that there's a pump on the ozone sand and it draws in air as the balloon is rising. And then that air will react with a chemical solution that's inside the sand. And so that chemical reaction creates a current which we then measure. So we're basically getting real-time measurements of, you know, at this point in the atmosphere, this is the concentration of ozone. We actually put contact information in there. So, you know, comes down somebody's backyard, they can give us a phone call, you know, hopefully we can make arrangements to pick it up. At the very least, we can be like, "It's not going to hurt you, you can stop panicking now."
The tethered ozone sand actually covers the area of the column from the ground up to 500 feet. And oh, look, we have a special guest. Researcher Jim Crawford's here to run camera during a tethered ozone sand ascent. Release the sands! Data's looking good.
The other thing we're measuring right now is aerosol spectrum. What that tells us is for a given size, how many aerosols are present. Aerosols, of course, mean just a little particle of dust.
Okay.
So this instrument measures aerosols from about 200 nanometers up to 20 micrometers. So what we're able to do is provide a profile very low down to compare with what the airplane measures between 1,000 and 5,000 feet.
After taking off from NASA Wallops, the P-3 follows a specific predetermined flight plan covering each of the Discover AQ ground stations. And then, obeying all laws of science and physics, the P-3 flies in over the tethered sand at 5,000 feet, begins a corkscrew motion safely all the way down to 1,000 feet gathering data and then heads off to the next ground station.
A satellite looks at particles due to their scattering. So light comes in the atmosphere and just like in haze, you can see the light being scattered.
Right, right.
And so they have to ascertain how much particulate matter is there based on a scattering signal. But that scattering signal is a wet signal and the wetter the particle, the bigger it is, the more it scatters.
Right.
So we have to understand not only the amount of particles in the atmosphere, but what their affinity for water is. Are they ones that like to be wet or ones that tend to shun water? We also have to worry about what they're made of. Sulfate aerosols from burning coal and things like that will tend to reflect light. Black carbon particles from a diesel engine, for instance, will absorb light. And so the difference between the way a particle interacts with light is important as well as whether it grows in a humidified environment.
And that's why you have so many instruments to actually measure that.
And if you saw the aerosol rack on the plane.
Right.
17 instruments, all looking at something different.
Discover AQ also uses automobiles to collect data on Interstate I-95. No, Mr. Scientist, that's not a time machine, that's a regular car fitted with LiDAR to collect data for Discover AQ. Be careful merging onto 95. So the LiDAR mobile or the Discover AQ mobile, what kind of equipment is this here?
Well, this kind of embodies in a mobile form what we have spread throughout the network. This is a sun photometer.
Okay.
That's a LiDAR. And there's about 10 LiDARs in the network that are basically sending a green pulse of light vertically, measuring how long it takes to be returned. And that timing gives us the position of where the aerosols are suspended in the atmosphere. So these two with a fixed ground site are working together mobily. So we're driving the length of I-95 up to the Delaware line, turning around, coming back and doing these profiles and getting extinction where the, basically the I-95 corridor.
The cool part about Discover AQ is that all these assets operate at the same time, gathering lots of data in the column. And how do we make all these assets available on the ground? With help from our partners like Howard University and other participating institutions.
The first stop is the Baltimore/Washington/DC area and they're going to be going, sort of traveling west across the country. Where are some of the sites you're going to be looking at?
Well, first of all, I would say that that question comes to us, which is why do you need to go to other locations in the first place? So think of Baltimore/Washington as that area on the East Coast that represents the endemic problem of the East Coast generates its own pollution, but it also receives everyone else's pollution as it makes its way across the continent because weather patterns and the general flow of the atmosphere is from west to east. So Maryland represents an opportunity to look at local emissions in the context of also what's coming from upstream. Houston represents a very different condition and we want to see the variety of factors that drive air quality. So in Houston, you're looking at a place where the petrochemical industry is highly concentrated and the emissions that come from that lead to a chemical mixture that's actually quite different than you would find, say, in a Maryland.
Okay.
And then finally, we find places like the Central Valley of California where the wintertime is actually when air quality has a big problem. Particulate matter can come from the direct burning of substances, you know, anything from wood burning to crop burning.
Right.
To actually the crops in the Central Valley and dust being blown up by wind. So all of that particulate matter in the wintertime is squeezed into a very thin atmospheric layer without the heating of the sun as much as you get in the summer. Things mix into a much smaller volume and that ends up concentrating it to much higher concentrations. So it's a difficult problem.
Well, Jim, I want to thank you so much. Good luck on your mission. Next four, five years is going to be wonderful to see you. I can't wait to read all the papers down the road.
That's right, we're looking forward to it.
You've heard it from Jim, you're watching NASA Edge and inside and outside look at all things NASA.
I thought these were data gathering instruments, but it was pointed out to me that these are the international colors of safety, not science. So they won't be gathering any data. Oh, it's hot up here. Haven't been this hot since I was roofing back at Shawshank. And for the record, nothing about this air quality needs to be discovered. Lawn maintenance shed. Now here's some equipment I can relate to. Not exactly.
Hey, welcome NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look.
At all things NASA.
Welcome to NASA Edge.
An inside and outside look at all things NASA.
We're here at NASA Langley Research Center's Landing and Impact Research Facility.
Where for many years, they've tested all kinds of vehicles.
And we have a new addition to facility, which is the Hydro Impact Basin.
Which you'll see in a little bit is a big giant test swimming pool.
And right behind us is the Orion Multi-Purpose Crew Vehicle or MPCV test article that's going to be dropped in the pool today. We're going to be doing a water landing test. But before we do that, we had a chance to catch up with some of the project managers from Johnson Space Center and Langley Research Center on the Orion MPCV at the ribbon cutting ceremony.
NASA's on a reinvigorated path of exploration, innovation and technological development leading to an array of challenging missions and destinations.
We're here at Mark Kerschitz, who's a deputy project manager for the Orion Multi-Purpose Crew Vehicle at NASA Johnson Space Center. How you doing?
Great.
Hey, tell us about, what is MPCV all about?
The multi-purpose crew vehicle is one of two key elements of our country's new human space exploration program. The Space Launch System is the rocket and the MPCV is the crew capsule. It's a five-meter capsule, slightly bigger than the Apollo, which was a little bit less than a four-meter capsule, weighs about 20,000 pounds, seats four crew for the duration of the exploration mission.
Now, the whole idea behind MPCV, let's say we're going to Mars one day. I mean, would that capsule itself actually go to Mars or is that the capsule that will be in low earth orbit and it'll go into a bigger spacecraft heading to Mars?
Yeah, MPCV will not only carry the crew to and from the surface of the Earth, it will support the crew during the exploration missions. To do an exploration mission all the way to Mars, there will have to be additional elements beyond the MPCV and the SLS to augment the capabilities of the spacecraft for that trip.
Now, during the Constellation days, Orion was the vehicle and now it's been morphed into MPCV. Has it changed at all since the early Orion days?
When we transitioned from Constellation to the new exploration program, we reevaluated all of the requirements for the human vehicle, what the vehicle needed to do to go visit other destinations, including near Earth objects, Mars, the moon. And amazingly enough, there was so much flexibility built into Orion, the requirements were a perfect fit for the new exploration program.
The gantry has been repurposed from the time of the lunar lander to drop an aircraft and now the pool here. How did we come up with the Hydro Impact Basin?
Well, basically Orion had made a decision to switch from a land landing to water landing. And at that time, there was no facility in the world that could do swings and do swings into the water. There's a lot of facilities that do vertical drops in the water, but we really needed to have a true landing scenario where you actually have to swing and drop in the water.
The Orion Crew Vehicle is similar to that of the Apollo vehicle.
Right.
How did they test for splash tests with Apollo?
Actually, they did the same type of test. They built a water basin over in California in Downey and they swung with a carriage swing parallelogram, just like we have here, and they swung and dropped the Apollo into the water basin.
How important is it to actually have facilities like this to conduct a water landing test?
Oh, you know, real tests are critical, super important to the development of any new spacecraft and this is a very unique facility here. It allows us to do two things. First of all, it allows us to repetitively drop the test article so we can do tests over and over and over. And also with a gantry behind me, it allows us to carefully control the conditions at which we drop the spacecraft. Things like its vertical velocity, its horizontal velocity and the angle at which it hits the water are all very important parameters. And we have to vary each of these parameters to explore what we call the envelope, the operational envelope of the Orion spacecraft.
When you look at the pool here, you have these markings back here on the back. What are they used for?
They're called photogrammetry targets and so we can use those as optical measurements. We put targets on the actual test vehicle, dots, black dots. And with those two optical targets, you can determine the velocities and test conditions at release. The water basin, its importance is really for calibrating simulation models. We can do more simulations very cheaply rather than doing a lot of drop tests. You still need tests to validate your models. And so this is the purpose of the basin is to help validate our models and verify that we know how to simulate water landings.
Now, do you see maybe an eventual water landing test in the ocean at some point in the future?
We don't have that in our plan. We can accomplish everything we need to do right here at this, at this facility.
Well, when do we expect to see MPCV in flight?
Well, our current flight test is planned for the late 2013, early 2014 timeframe. We're working with our headquarters colleagues and our partners at the Marshall Space Flight Center who are developed in the SLS to sync up our schedules and our budgets to develop the full schedule all the way to the first human flight. But we anticipate our first unmanned test flight in late 13, early 14.
Beyond test on the multi-purpose crew vehicle, are there any future uses for it?
Oh, there's a lot of uses, especially over in the helicopter/rotocraft community and also in the aerospace community. And I know that Lisa Jones, the facility head, she's got several aerospace companies that are interested in dropping their aircraft here as well. And we can accommodate those types of sizes as well.
So the life of the Hydro Impact Basin will outlive the Orion in return to space programming?
Most likely it will, still be here 50 years from now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
You're watching NASA Edge and inside and outside look at all things NASA.
Hi, this is Chuck LaFevere, Director of Safety for a safety-proof disaster preparedness company. Glad to have you here today to explain something about earthquake preparedness. There are steps to earthquake preparedness that you need to take. Number one is to walk through your home and take a look at the risks.
So when we walk into people's homes, there's generally three things that we look at. Number one, is it going to fall and hurt someone? Is it going to block an exit or an entrance? The third thing we think about is, is this item precious to a homeowner? Is it something that they want to keep safe? Now, before the Northridge earthquake, the way we used to fasten everything is we would bolt it right into a wall. But after Northridge, we found out that some quakes are predominantly uplift quakes, meaning they go up and down. When that happens, it just shears right off the bolt. Typically, when we fasten large pieces of furniture, we do so with the aid of something we call a flexible fastener. This is called a quake-proof. All flexible fasteners work about the same way. They're attached to the furniture with a piece of adhesive, which in this case is a really sturdy automotive-type adhesive. It's then attached to the wall with a flexible strap and then screwed into the wall that goes right into a stud. It's really important that it's in a stud because if it's not in a stud, it probably won't work. The other thing that's nice about these fasteners is they're very aesthetically pleasing. You can have a beautiful home and it's still going to be beautiful after you fastened it and it's still going to be beautiful after an earthquake. You know, we tell people, and it's really true, the kitchen is one of the most dangerous rooms in the house and that's particularly true during an earthquake. Think about everything inside your cabinets flying at you right at eye level. The way we keep that from happening is something called a push latch. The way a push latch works is you shut the door, the door stays shut, everything inside the cabinet stays in place until you push it open with just your finger. They open extremely easily. Another thing we look at when we walk into a kitchen is the stove. This is a gas stove. So regardless of where it's positioned in the kitchen, it needs to be fastened. Remember that in an earthquake, anything can move any direction up to 10 feet and it doesn't matter how heavy it is. Many homes, like this one, have a washer and dryer set that's right by an exit. So in this type of a situation, we'd like to encourage the homeowners to get these fastened so it doesn't block an exit. However, if you have a gas dryer, it doesn't matter where it is, get it fastened. Many times washers and dryers are by water heaters, so you can just imagine what would happen with live gas, a water heater or even the lighting could set off a fire. Imagine it's 4:30 in the morning, it's totally black and an earthquake strikes. First inclination is to run down the hall for whatever reason, to check on your kids or whatever. But all of us in our hallways have all of these pictures, whether they're the little tiny ones with friends and family or pictures as large as this hanging in our hallways. The first thing they do is they hop up off a nail and land in the hallway. So many people land in the hospital because they've cut their feet during an earthquake. From running through the glass from these pictures, a very simple solution is an industrial-grade Velcro. You can get it at Home Depot. You take very small pieces, you can see these aren't very big at all, and you very simply attach them to the back of the picture, one at the left, one at the right. And this will keep your picture from popping off the nail or the hanger and keep it from falling in the hallways. So you don't have to run through glass when you're running down that hallway. Now that this hutch has been fastened, we have just one more thing we have to think about. What about all the items that are in the hutch that could come through the glass and again, virtually destroy that beautiful piece of furniture? We've got a very simple solution. All home stores have adhesive putties. You can get them, they're very simply attached to the bottom of the item and then when you place it back down on the surface, it adheres and it stays there until you want to move it. They're very, very good adhesives, they will handle items up to 20 pounds, most of them. Again, we want to think about doing that because we don't want to have to clean it up. We don't want loved ones running through the glass from urns and items like this and hurting themselves.
In addition, the main thing you need to understand is that after an earthquake, most people want to run. Don't run. Because what you need to understand is there are aftershocks. It's most important that you stop, look and listen. How many of you have a fire extinguisher in the bedroom? The next thing that happens after an earthquake is typically a fire. You also should have a crowbar to allow yourself to get out of a door that may be jammed as a result of an earthquake. You should have leather palm gloves, you should have shoes that are good so that you can walk through the glass that inevitably is going to be cracked during an earthquake. And most important, those of you that need to wear glasses, you should have those glasses placed in glass cases and then Velcro to the side of the bedboard, not to the table next to your bed because in most instances, that table's going to be flying unless of course you fastened it. So, I hope you enjoy your visit with us, and I hope you learned something about earthquake preparedness. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Marcelo Lenninger, and I'm thrilled and honored to be the New West Symphony's new music director. I'm eager to get to know and welcome you to our concerts. I look forward to working with the fine professional musicians of our orchestra to further the symphony's long tradition of presenting outstanding musical performances. We have a fantastic season planned, including distinguished guest artists, symphonic masterpieces, and much more. I know you want to join us. Beethoven's Erika Symphony headlines a February concert, which will also include the beloved Violin Concerto featuring the dazzling technique and lustrous tone of violinist Rachel Barton-Pine. The orchestra's founding music director, Boris Bratt, will lead this concert of familiar favorites. Four of our own stellar principal musicians will be featured on our April program in Haydn's Symphony Concertante for oboe, bassoon, violin, and cello. The concert will be caped with Mozart Symphony Number 41, the Jupiter Symphony. Finally, our season will come to a thrilling close with Beethoven's glorious Ninth Symphony. Four soloists for the great Ode to Joy will be chosen through our innovative YouTube online competition. They will be joined by the New West Symphony Chorus and the Los Robles Master Chorale in the finale to our spectacular masterpiece series season. It's easy to order tickets to the symphony, and we have a wide variety of packages available. Our full-season subscriptions offer the best value with many seating options and subscriber benefits. We also have specially-priced student rush tickets, as well as our popular front-row club that introduces young families to the orchestra. Please visit our website at newwssymphony.org or call 805-497-5880 for information. And as we move forward, I know that the orchestra and I will have your support. It is an exciting new era for the New West Symphony, so let's go make some great music together.
Good morning and welcome to Meet the Artist. This morning, we're pleased to have Dr. Russell Steinberg with us to interview our guest conductor, Marcelo Lenninger. In addition to being the informative and entertaining pre-concert lecturer, Dr. Steinberg is a composer, conductor, and pianist. I'd say that's pretty amazing. Maestro Lenninger is currently the Assistant Conductor at Boston Symphony and is considered one of the most dynamic and gifted conductors of his generation. Joining in the conversation will be guest concertmaster Franklin D'Antonio, who is currently concertmaster with the Berklee Symphony, and a renowned violinist. And he will provide some lovely musical interludes. As you can see, we're in for a real treat. So, let's meet the artist.
Okay, let's take a seat. So, gentlemen, this is going to be a real pleasure today to talk with you a little bit about what you do, your passions, and learn a little bit about the concert as well. If it's okay, Marcel, I'd like to start with you, since you are a guest conductor. And the way I would like to start is I, you know, we live in this internet age. And I have been receiving, I don't know, maybe 40 people have sent me an internet video of a four-year-old conducting the finale of Beethoven's Fifth Symphony. Have you seen that video?
Yeah, they saw that, yeah.
Everyone is sending us this video. And you know, and I'm thinking, you know, so you know, already, you know, four years old, he's ready to conduct the New York Philharmonic. And people ask me my reaction. I say, "Well, I really feel I can learn from this." Because there's such a natural quality of the way he plays it. But most of us don't start when we're four years old knowing we want to carry a stick and just wave it around like that. You know, usually, we start in other ways with music and come to that. Could you talk to me? I mean, did you start that way in four-years-old?
No, I didn't. But I start, I come from a musical family. So, my mom's a pianist, my father's a violinist, and music was natural in my home. And I started with the violin first, and then piano. And I was not four, but I was about 12, 13, or 14 when I started learning conducting back in Brazil.
That's still very young.
Yeah, well, but again, not four. I wish I could do that, but yes. But I started violin when I was four, and then piano, and then conducting.
So, you grew up in a household where you were hearing music all the time. So, by the time you were, you know, 12, 13, you knew a lot of repertoire, right?
Yeah, yeah. In my house was 24-hours-a-day music, non-stop. And even before there, that, I see, for example, I can see videos of my mom playing with, you know, I was there. And so, somehow, maybe I was hearing that music even before I was born.
Oh, I'm sure that's true. I'm sure that's true. You know, the current conductor of the New York Philharmonic, Alan Gilbert, I remember him saying that his, both his parents were in the New York Philharmonic, and his earliest memories were being at rehearsals. Imagine that? Yeah, so that's great. So, how did the transition come about? Because being a performer is a very different thing than, you know, when you're dealing with all your own issues and everything you're trying to communicate versus trying to collaborate with other people in that way, conducting?
Yeah, that's true. And I think, well, first, I started playing violin in an orchestra. And then, my father was a concertmaster in an orchestra in Brazil, and a great Brazilian conductor named Elieza de Carvalho was the music director. And, you know, I was the little kid running and boring everyone, and people, you know, asked me to be quiet. But I really grew up inside an orchestra and hearing the sound of an orchestra. So, the environment of an orchestra, it really makes me feel home. And I think being an instrumentalist, especially piano, you can be too lonely, can be a really lonely life, you know, playing. You practice alone, you're in the instrument. You travel alone, you play alone. So, the part that I really enjoy about doing what I do, it's really interacting with people. And I think, because I love people, I love being around people, and I think that's the main reason I choose to do what I do.
Yeah, that really, that's beautifully said. There, it is, people don't realize, when you're a pianist, you really are largely, you know, working, you know, it's a mental interior by yourself and everything. But once you're playing like violin, you know, suddenly, you're playing with other people, you're playing quartets, and it's just a very natural thing to have that social extension. Did you say you started in a youth orchestra?
Yes, I did. I used to play violin. I was the last ten of the second violins.
Oh, my gosh, I have something in common with you. I couldn't believe that.
So do I.
Yeah, but I think it was great. And being a musician in an orchestra, I think, is really important because you really can sense the feeling of being there, being the other side. And so, that was great as well.
And plus, you learn that, you know, the whole universe doesn't circle around you because everything is about responding, you know, to other people and thinking about the music first.
Yeah.
Well, I'm very, the reason I asked you that question is I conduct the L.A. Los Angeles Youth Orchestra, and I'm very interested, when I talk with professional musicians, whether they got their start. It's amazing how many musicians got their start in youth orchestra, how that inspired them to...
Yeah, that's true. I think it's so important. And I think that's the reason many orchestras in this country, they are having as well a youth orchestra, because it comes from, you know, early ages, that when you have that experience, when you're a kid, you'll be either a professional musician or a music appreciator. So, I think that's really important.
Yeah, that's really where our audiences will come from, right? Because you have to be involved and do it. You know, it's not just playing the music.
And that's our future audience as well.
Yeah, I agree with you completely. So, talk to us a little bit about your career then, and how, you know, starting as a teenager, you started conducting. How did that start to change your feeling about what you were going to do?
Well, and then, I was studying conducting, and I was about 18 or 19-years-old. I won a competition in Brazil, and I started conducting professionally, which, yeah, it's, I was, it's young to be a conductor conducting professionally, but it gave me a great experience conducting great orchestras. Then, I decided to come here to the United States and do my masters at Bard College Upstate New York with Harold Harberman. And I just stayed, I stayed in New York, then Washington. I was working with the National Symphony. Then, I was back in Brazil for 10 months, and now, I'm at Boston Symphony.
Well, talk to us about the Boston Symphony. That is, that's an orchestra with an amazing heritage and tradition for composers. You know, that was the orchestra that commissioned Bartok's Concerto for Orchestra and so many other great pieces.
Yeah, that's true. It's an amazing orchestra to start with. They're really terrific. And it's a great environment. And as you said, there is so much history there. The concert hall is beautiful. It's really something. And just to be able to be there and watching those great conductors rehearse the orchestra and conduct the orchestra, and being able to conduct the orchestra as well. I had my debut with them in last October. So, it's just, it's an amazing experience. It's very, very, very important for my development, I believe. And I'm really happy to be there. Although, we were talking before, I'm much happier here in California because of the weather now. But being at the Boston Symphony, it's very, really.
Believe it or not, you're not the first person to have made that observation. And I bet you half of this audience at least came from the East Coast. And we'll never go back. Yeah, no, and as we mentioned, because I was in Boston too, the wind tunnels from the buildings add to the joy.
Turning the corner.
And I was telling Marcelo, if you're really enjoying January, just wait till February. It gets better. So, yeah, that's why, could you tell us a little bit? Oh, you started already to hint at it, but I think a lot of us don't know. What is an assistant conductor? What are the various tasks that you do as assistant conductor?
Well, that depends a little bit in each orchestra you're working. But at the Boston Symphony, my job is to be covering the concerts of Maestro Levine and the assistant conductors. So, I need to be there. I need to be prepared in all the rehearsals and all the concerts. Sometimes, you have some palpitations when the phone, you know, rings half an hour before the concert, and they ask you to bring your tails because Maestro Levine's flight is delayed or something. And, but, and also, I get to conduct the orchestra. I conducted in the Symphony Hall last October, and I'm going to conduct in Tangle next summer. And so, that's the mainly, the mainly job, just to, you have some concerts you conduct. You need to be prepared to do sometimes the first rehearsals when the conductor are not there yet, and to be able to be on call for...
So, you're studying all the scores?
Oh, yes, I am.
That all the other conductors are working on. So, you're going through the whole season, basically, just like a regular conductor?
Yes, and the season in Boston is really, it's big. And the amount of great music they do there, but also very difficult, the repertoire is amazing. I have a pile of scores like that I have to learn in a such short time. And here as well, I hope I had more time to, you know, to do some tourism, but I have like a pile of these scores I have to learn. So, I'm studying my hotel room. But it's really amazing. It's a great place to be, very inspiring, and I'm happy to be there.
Yeah, I want to talk with you a little bit about that because, you know, as a guest conductor, being on call, you know, like a doctor who has to suddenly, suddenly go with any kind of opportunity that comes up or emergency. You know, for instance, you're conducting here. When did you find out that you would be conducting the concert this week?
I think it was last Thursday, maybe? Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, when it was confirmed. And I was glad that I had the week available to come here.
To have a few days to actually prepare.
Yeah, I had a few days to prepare. Luckily, I had the pieces, I knew the pieces, and I conducted pieces except the Bernstein. I never conducted before. And then, I knew the music, but I never learned before. So, I really opened the score on Thursday and was spending eight-hours a day just, you know, learning everything as much as I can to be prepared.
Do you think that the conductors are a little bit like those emergency people at hospitals that live on the adrenaline? You know, the excitement of just having a few days to make this whole thing happen like that?
Well, unfortunately, I just discovered that. I hope I knew that before I chose to do what I do. I'm kidding, I love what I do. But yes, you live in a constant adrenaline because you never know what's going to happen. And as I said, sometimes, I had crazy, crazy stories to tell you. For example, I remember one, once in Washington, I was, I'll tell you briefly. I was in Washington covering a concert for Sladkin, Master Sladkin. And they have three concerts there, the same program, three evenings. And the second, the first, the second concert, I was at the audience. And I remember the artistic director coming up to me like white, and he told me, "Well, you need to conduct tomorrow. Sladkin's not feeling well, and you need to be prepared for tomorrow." And one of the pieces was a contemporary piece. And I was like, "What?" And I remember, "Well, you need to be prepared." So, the next day, Sladkin got a little bit better, but they still was like, "Oh, you still need to be prepared. We don't know what's going to happen." And I remember it was five minutes before the concert.
Oh, my gosh.
Backstage, ready with my baton.
And your tails.
I was like, "Am I going onstage or not? Just, you know, give him a cure or something." And Sladkin, Sladkin got there, and he was like, "I'm feeling better. You know, work on the first half, but be prepared for the second." Anyway, when the concert was finished, I was like, "Ah." And I think the relief I had was, you know, was even bigger if I was conducting the concert.
That might have been your greatest performance.
Yeah, probably, probably. I never be so concertated and focused, but yeah.
That's an amazing story. And I think it talks a lot about the flexibility you have to have. People don't understand, you know, conducting involves so many other things besides the actual direction of the orchestra. There's so much else involved. Now, when you are going to, you know, traveling to places like an orchestra like the New West Symphony, which you haven't worked with before, how do you go about establishing rapport? Because there's so little time and everything. So, how do you, how do you do that? To make the music come alive?
Well, it comes, there is many techniques and rehearsing techniques you can apply. And also, it really is a teamwork. And you feel the orchestra. You feel how they're responding to whatever you're doing. And you need to be able to change it as well and go to another direction sometimes. and you need to be able to change it as well, and go to another direction sometimes. And of course, it comes to some experience.
So you see how they respond to things that you're saying?
Exactly. It's hard, because it's, there are eighty musicians, there are people that you need to be there and say, "Good evening," or "Good morning," or whatever, and we start from something, and so it's a hard first relationship, but you learn how to deal with that, and you learn how to approach them in a positive and healthy way. So usually works, I don't know if you're working right now, but usually works.
Marcelo, it works very well.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, because when you think of it, these eighty musicians all have their own idea of how the piece should go, you know?
That's true.
And so you're playing around with that.
But really, the approach, and I think that's important to do, because many people, they're still, they don't know exactly what the conductor's job is, but I, maestros doesn't exist anymore. We're not maestros.
Right.
And I'm saying that because we're not teaching musicians how to play anymore, because they're, the professional level now is so high. So we're only conductors, and so we need to have the open mind and the open heart that we're going there to collaborate with them and work as a team to make the wonderful music that we're playing happen in the best and the healthiest way.
Well, that makes a wonderful transition, because...
I must say that this is a very rare perspective that Marcelo has, because many conductors still consider themselves maestros and want to teach musicians how to play. The fact that he is sensitive, and one of very few conductors, I also have worked with some Russian conductors, Yuri Temerkonov and Gergiev, and they respect the musicians enough to realize that this is a collaborative effort as opposed to a teaching experience, and very few things turn off an orchestra member as quickly as when they start getting instruction from a conductor on how to play the instrument, as if they have no experience at all. You do need to treat a professional with thirty or forty years' experience differently than you treat, or speak to a youth orchestra who's maybe never played this piece before. The fact that Marcelo is sensitive to that distinction immediately engenders his relationship with an orchestra and makes us want to perform for him and be sensitive and really seriously consider, and just as an aside, you wouldn't know, but I got a good amount of feedback from musicians who were very impressed with him, because when a conductor is literally thrust upon an orchestra, I mean, all of you have a lot of worldly experiences, so if I were, for instance, to stand in front of you and start giving my perspective on how you should live your lives, you might sit back and say, "Well, what do you know about life at your age compared to what I've experienced?" So I have to come off right away with valid things to say, sensitive to your own unique experiences. And Marcelo has that ability, which is uncommon, I won't say it's unique, but it's uncommon, and it does bring out the best in the relationship, and then makes the musicians want to be sensitive to what he says and give him even more of what he says. The sincerity in his face, the genuineness of his baton technique also relates to us, and we want to give him more.
Beautiful. And so we have, we have here on the stage the exact idea of collaboration, of what this is all about. Franklin, would you like to share with us some music? Because I know you brought your...
Sure. I just happen to have.
Yes, reminder why Bach is the master of all. I was so relieved, you know, The New York Times published, Anthony Thomasini published his list of the ten greatest classical composers, and I was so nervous if Bach was going to make the list. Luckily, he made it number one, but Haydn didn't fare so well, apparently. Anyway, thank you so much for sharing that. You know, Franklin, one of the things, you know, I read, I read something you wrote about your own youth orchestra conductor, Maely Meda.
Oh.
And I found it very touching.
This is Zubin Meda's father.
Yeah, this is Zubin Meda's father, right. And he founded the American Youth Symphony here, here in Los Angeles. So you clearly were part of that orchestra, that was one of your early experiences. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Well, that, that organization, and, let's see, I started in nineteen seventy-four and left in seventy, oh, seventy, wait, sorry, nineteen seventy and left about six years later. That organization, that experience alone singly prepared me for a career as a professional musician, and it was strictly due to Maely Meda's, not only his dedication, but his wisdom and insight as to the, what was necessary to prepare to be a professional musician. A lot of youth orchestras are conducted by, they're run by conductors, and they pick programs that they feel the orchestra can do, but as far as Maely was concerned, there were corollaries that he constantly drilled into us. One of the most famous was that, or the most repeated was, "You must always listen to everybody that's playing around you, the orchestra, your stand partners, you're part of a group. You can't be totally buried in what it is that you're doing." And a lot of, sometimes you think, "Well, if you have great players in your orchestra, that makes for a better orchestra." But for any of you who are into sports, sometimes an all-star team does not play nearly as well as a well-rounded team. So you can't have such an ego when you're playing, where you can't play in an orchestra as if you're a soloist, because what it means is, you're not watching the conductor, and you're not listening to this stand partner, and you're not listening to this, you're not listening to anybody around you. So you have a couple of people who are sticking out, and everything, the ensemble goes out the window. So the one thing I learned, playing in an orchestra is like driving in traffic. You have to be very aware of all of those around you, and you have to blend all the time. So it's a combination of watching the conductor, being sensitive to what he or she is asking for, and putting that in the context of a section. So you not only want to play your most beautifully, but you also have to incorporate the anonymity of being part of a section, not of individuals, but you're part of a greater whole. And Maely was constantly drilling into us, "Play as much chamber music as you possibly can, because then you listen, and listen to music." And also the repertoire that we learned, it was all standard orchestra, we called them war horses, but there was the standard repertoire, so that when I came and began my career when I was seventeen, and I had to take auditions, I already knew most of the, most of the repertoire that was done. I have to tell you just as an aside, when I auditioned for the Chicago Symphony, very often on auditions, they request sight reading. And one of the pieces that I had done with Maely Meda was the Bartok Concerto for Orchestra, and some of you are very familiar with that piece, but in the last movement, it's a very fast, kind of a rumbling that goes on all sixteenth notes. But by the time we had learned a piece with Maely, it was literally memorized because of the length of the rehearsals and the amount of time he expected us to watch him. He didn't want your face buried, I mean, it's for conductor, it's very disturbing. "I'm trying to communicate with you, and everybody, you're looking in the music." So you want some visual communication. "I'm trying to talk to you, I'm trying to express with you, if, at least if you look at me, I'm getting somewhere, otherwise I'm just playing for some mannequins." So I knew the, I knew the Bartok so well, that when they pulled out this sight reading, and of course, this is your bit of anxiety, because you have your romantic concerto prepared, you have your Mozart concerto prepared, you may have twelve or fifteen orchestra excerpts, and all this takes a long time. But then, the unknown, the dealer puts down the card, "What are you going to have to sight read?" Now, it could be something modern, it could be something that you're expected to know, a Tchaikovsky symphony, Brahms symphony, Beethoven. This happened to be Bartok Concerto for Orchestra, and they pulled out the last movement. And when I saw this with this blackness, you know, if you know the score, it's just, the opening is all sixteenth notes, and every section, every line has a different, I saw that, and I just thought, "Yes. Thank you, Maely, because I can nail every note of this, even though in nineteen eighty-one I hadn't been in the orchestra for five years, I knew it so well." And I understood from several years later that it had been two or three years after I joined the orchestra, that they had hired somebody else. And people on the committee said, now, Schulte didn't know my name, because obviously I was just another member of the orchestra, he says, "But we must find another young boy who can sight read like that young gentleman from California." I just happened to be lucky, but that's part of the risks of sight reading. But anyway, it was a credit to Maely and his demands of the orchestra, that we were expected to know the parts so well. So every piece that I have ever done, that I learned from American Youth, like the Romeo and Juliet overture that we're doing this week, is virtually memorized. I might need a little bit of refresher course, but it is certainly within what it is that I have to do, requires almost no practicing, because I learned it so well because of his demands as a conductor.
Yeah, it's an astonishing story. Thank you for sharing that. I love that sight reading story, because I've got to tell you, there's nothing that gets performers more nervous than, classical performers than sight reading, you know, because it involves so many different, different unknowns. And you know that even though the people say, "Well, we're not judging you on, you know, on how well you're playing, we just want to see if you can read."
Baloney.
And you know darn well.
Well, sight reading, are you familiar with what sight reading means? Well, so I've seen some head shake. Sight reading is the ability to look at a piece of music having never necessarily heard it or seen it before, and be able to process and play it. And for my students that I've taught for some thirty years, when they talk about sight reading and how difficult it is, and how very often it's a part of an audition process, and certainly it's part of a process when you're playing chamber music with people, and they say, "Well, come over to our home and let's read something." Well, nobody knows everything. Sight reading really basically comes down to the ability to play what you can play and start floating over what you can. So it could be a tricky rhythm, but you must always keep the rhythm going in your mind, grab the notes that you can, and don't play what you can't play. That way, you don't do any damage. And in orchestra, especially for conductor, not all of us are of equal capability. And sometimes, no matter where we sit in the section, we might happen to make a mistake. We have to know, "Uh-oh, I'm in a little bit of trouble. I'll back off until I get back locked in." So as long as you don't do any damage, no matter where you are sitting in the orchestra, as a listener, you're only going to hear people who are playing their parts well. So sight reading is the ability to process, to look at something, process it, know what you can get, know what you can't, and play that, what you can't get or what you don't or are not sure of, back off, play very lightly until you can get locked in, and then come back in. So there's this kind of in-and-out process. It's very, very cerebral and very cutting-edge, and I find it a lot of fun, because it's really like risk-taking, because you never know what you're going to get, and you never know how your brain is going to process something.
And people tell, say that classical musicians don't have to deal with improvisation. What is that? We're constantly improvising.
Yes.
Yeah, and sight reading, you know, the ability, you want, you want people in the orchestra that can read well, because then, that allows, you know, allows you, if you're doing contemporary music, you know that you, the ones who are stronger readers, you'll be able to put the piece together a little bit quicker and be able to, they'll lead the others as they learn, because it's a, there's a learning process that goes in, you want to keep that as fast as possible.
And there will always be pieces programmed that nobody's played before. When I play up in Berklee, we do at least one world premiere piece on every program. So everybody starts out, even the conductor, some composers don't release a MIDI of the piece, because, "Well, we just did something last week, and the synthesizer was not capable of making the sounds that the composer was asking for." So that just gives you an idea of how bizarre and different techniques of not drawing the bow this way across, we had to draw the bow this way across the instrument. So there are many different kinds of techniques, and you have to be able to sight read and put this together quickly, so you're not wasting a lot of valuable rehearsal time. And rehearsal time is very valuable.
It's very valuable, that's true. And it's, you hope the composer actually finished the piece by the time you're going to rehearsal.
Oh, my goodness. It's amazing, yes.
Sometimes that, yeah, sometimes that doesn't happen. And I remember one time I was doing a contemporary festival, and was conducting five contemporary pieces, and I remember one compo, and I didn't have the piece yet.
Yeah, you can't study it.
The whole piece yet, and can be tricky, can be hard. Sometimes you open, it was like, "What, how am I going to conduct this? I mean, it's, you know, the rhythm is fifteen four, whatever." And I remember this compo, he was a character, and he was finishing the piece in the hotel minutes before the first rehearsal, and we have to leave the hotel, and he was, he was very shy, and he was very, you know, embarrassed because of, he didn't finish the piece yet. And he was putting the pages of the score under my door. So I was studying, and, oh, right, one more, and then one more page, and I was studying, hey, another one, until we have actually to leave to the rehearsal. And the orchestra, for sure, they didn't have the parts yet, so they had to, we have to, it was a mess. But anyway, it happens.
Sometimes the pages are warm when they're put on the stage, they're, you feel it, "This just came out of the printer." The conductor has different responsibilities, whether, I can't say necessarily whether they're, I won't say, speak to whether they're greater or not, because he can always do this and say, "How come it isn't?" Not that Marcelo does this. But he has less of an opportunity to make the mistake. If I make a mistake, I only embarrass myself. If the conductor makes a miscue or miscalculation, all of a sudden, everybody's confused. So it's really imperative that a composer, if any of you are aspiring composers or current composers, really get the conductor, at least because he's our leader, and he guides us through this unknown process. If your guide has no where this trail is leading, then the rest of the group is in, it's not as in good shape as we would like.
This is very true, but I'd also like to mention that there's a very, there's a very long history and esteemed heritage to this lateness too. You know, Mozart, Mozart was notorious for getting music very, very late to performers, and he had, I think there's a story, was it, was it, was it Magic Flute where they were actually sight reading? One of the operas, he was actually sight reading, or players were sight reading at the performance, the overture, you know, so that's, that's really interesting. Well, that brings me to, I'd like to ask a little bit about a concert master, and what a concert master does, because we see you up there, we applaud when you come out, what are some of the, what are some of the things we don't know that a concert master has to do?
Well, there's many, many hours of preparation before the first rehearsal. And my personal approach is that I want to come to the first rehearsal literally prepared to perform the concert, because I think that's what the conductor expects. He doesn't expect to look down at this person who's to his left and be trying to figure out what it is that he's supposed to be doing. I should be nearly as prepared with a piece... I should be nearly as prepared with a piece as the conductor is. And the other part of my responsibilities, besides knowing the piece well enough where I literally can perform it, which means all my notes have to be in tune, they have to be playing, I have to be playing in the right place. I can't bring in a section in the wrong place. Playing in an orchestra is very visual. First of all, the most visual component of being in an orchestra is watching the conductor. And from our very earliest orchestral training, we are trained to respond to the face of the composer, the conductor, but also any of his or her movements. That's how we know what to do, not only how fast to play, how loud to play, but how expressive. So when Marcelo looks down at the violins, and he does this, and he has almost a pleading look on our face, it doesn't mean for us to kind of do this. It means we sit forward and we give him what he wants. So there is an unspoken pantomime, that, a dance if you will, where we don't actually touch each other, but it's an emotional contact between the conductor and the orchestra. And he expects me to be able to lead my section, bring them in correctly. But before then, any of that happens, before the first rehearsal, I get the music, and now I have to bow the parts. Now, spending many decades in a section, it's very frustrating to sit down, and these bowings are almost unplayable. And many of my years of teaching, when you have these bowing exercises written by Kreutzer and Sevjiak and Schradic, and students say, these bowings, why do I have to need to learn all these variations? I say, because very often, you'll play with a concert master who has a completely different concept of how something should be bowed, and it feels completely opposite. As a player, you have to have the flexibility to play with his concept of bowing with equal ease and equal proficiency as the bowing style that you're comfortable with. So to be flexible is very important. I have to go through the music, and I would have to say, the time that it takes for me to bow the part is generally four to five times the amount of time it takes to play through the music. Because not only do I have to go through the parts, but very often, there are devisi parts. So for instance, in the Bernstein, and also in the Wagner that we're playing, we have these long lines, so I have devisi bowing, where the outside of the section, the outside player.
Devisi is when there's, the section is actually playing two notes. And by the way, just to back up with bowing.
Sure.
It's always amazed me, you know, a bow can only go in two directions. It can only go down or up, and yet, this is one of the most complex things. If a section does not play with the correct bowing, you know it instantly if they're not together.
Well, you can see it, but it also affects the sound. So visually, you want to see conformity in there. Now, in some of the sections, when you come to the performance in the Wagner, you'll see that the violins are not changing the bow at exactly the same time. The reason I did that was because Wagner has written, composers don't take into account bowings. They're thinking of the sound that they want, and it's up to the players to deliver that sound. So we have these long, long legato markings, which show how the phrases are to be. We can't hold the bow that long. The winds and brass can take these very, very long breasts, that can last maybe close to a minute, if they have good lung capacity. We can't draw the bow for a minute and produce any kind of sound. So I vary the bow so that the inside and the outside are changing at different times. So to you, you may see the bows change at this different time, but to your ears, you hear this long phrase, because we're not all changing the bow at the same time. So all of this has to be considered, and it all has to work out. Because at the first rehearsal, the bowings have to be right. The last thing these professionals sitting behind me want to see is, this doesn't work out, this guy doesn't know what, he didn't do his homework, just the same way. So I have different responsibilities, but the same way with the conductor. He has to learn his homework, and I have to prepare my homework, and that takes a lot of time. And after I finish everything, I still go through and play it through a couple of times, because I may have thought it worked out, but I made a mistake here, this is marked wrong. Because it goes to the library, and then he puts all those bowings in those parts. And then everybody has to stop, and it interrupts the rehearsal. So any mistakes I make in my preparation stops the rehearsal, stops the flow, and I don't want to interfere with what it is that the conductor wants to say, because of some error that I made in that respect. So I'm kind of middle management.
Excellent. So Franklin, maybe, why don't you, I know you have another piece you'd like to play, so we can focus on bowing then. What is it you'd like to play for us?
Well, I would like to do G minor fugue, also by Bach. And one of the things that, as I studied this piece, and I learned about Bach, Bach is, a lot of great, great violinists, I studied with Yasha Heifetz, and he considered Bach to be a musical, or the violin equivalent of the Bible. And you realize, of course, whether you're religious or not, there are a multitude of interpretations. And people have very strong opinions about how the Bible should be interpreted, as they do with Bach. So Bach is a dangerous composer to take on, because you're probably going to perhaps offend a lot of people. But one of the things that amazes me about Bach, as I've studied it, and I try to think of Bach not as just for a solo instrument, but I imagine it on an orchestral scale. And he's taken an orchestral work, and he's reduced it down to a single instrument that is designed literally to play one note at a time. The violin is not really designed to primarily play more than one note. And the reason for that is, you can see the bridge is slightly curved. Well, this allows us, as opposed to the guitar, which is a chordal instrument, we have to now play on more than one string, so there's a lot of bowing work that's done with this. This is the G minor fugue, and try to listen to how the theme passes throughout the piece.
It's just beautiful. You know, it reminds... Whenever we hear these, you know, the partitas, the sonatas, or the cell sonatas, this feeling of the instrument transcending all of its limitations, the sense of trying to reach the sublime, it really hits us with this, with Bach all the time in these pieces. And this is a good transition to talk about the concert that you're going to be conducting, Marcelo, because it's titled "Love Actually." Not "Love Virtually," not "Love Lackadaisically," not "Love..." You know, it's "Love Actually." So, we want to talk a little bit about the music that we're going to be hearing?
Sure, yeah. So, the theme behind the program we're doing is love, actually. And so, we're playing beautiful pieces by, starting with Wagner, the "Ziegfeld-Eil," which is a piece that he composed to his wife as a gift on her birthday, which was Christmas Day after the born of their first child, Ziegfeld. And then, we're moving to Tchaikovsky's "Romeo and Juliet." It's a very well-known piece and a beautiful love story, very tragic but beautiful. Then, we're playing another Wagner, which is the Tristan and Zoda, the prelude and the...
Liebesteht.
The Liebesteht from the opera, which is also a very tragic love story, but I think it was, it's one of the most beautiful pieces by Wagner. It's amazing and really changed the history of music.
Absolutely.
After he composed that, the whole harmony and structure of music really was changed after that. It was a turning point. And then, we're playing Bernstein, the symphonic dances by West Side Story. And so, they are all related to love stories. And Bernstein, actually, he based his West Side Story on the Shakespeare "Romeo and Juliet." He tried to do the story that was similar, although in a completely different context. It happens in New York and there is Puerto Rican and, I mean, but I think the combination of those four musics are beautiful and well-done. And it's just, you know, why not to talk about love? That's always a great thing to talk and to feel, so I think it's a beautiful program.
Yeah, it is. You know, the Bernstein is, musically, is so different too, because it's not often that you have a drum set in the orchestra as well. So, all kinds of, so we're going to be hearing all kinds of dimensions of love.
That's true, yeah. Very mellow, very passionate, and also very, how can I say? The Bernstein is completely different. You're not expect for a love theme, although there is some moments in the piece, like Maria and everything. It's really melodic, but there is also very great written aspects, and as you said, the drum set, and there's the mambo part with the love. And be prepared for some surprises and to be, to hear some things that the orchestra will be doing that's not necessarily playing an instrument. There'll be a surprise if you don't know the piece, of course.
It's always a surprise. And all these pieces have had such a huge impact, as you said, on music. Tristan actually changed the whole way we think of harmony and everything, but they all have. You know, "Romeo and Juliet" from Tchaikovsky, you know, that theme we all wait for is kind of like the quintessential syrupy version of love. But when you hear it in the original version and how that theme comes out of a lot of preparation and turmoil, it's a very different experience.
And it is amazing, because I, it's fantastic how Tchaikovsky actually described the drama that Shakespeare played into music. And everything is there. The love theme is there, the balcony scene is there, the fights between, the soul fights.
A lot of notes in there.
Yeah, that's true. Everything is in there, so I think it's really a masterpiece, Tchaikovsky masterpiece, and I'm happy to be performing here for you.
And we're going to, we're very excited to have you and to hear you. And these concerts will be wonderful. I want to thank you so much for spending the time and sharing all of this. And we're going to now have, Franklin is now going to play a third piece, and you want to talk a little bit about it?
Well, I needed to find a very special, special guest artist. And I met him just before we came out. I want to do something perhaps on the lighter side. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with a piece called "Chartis," which is a very famous Hungarian dance. And I have, in the past, I've played it alone. I wrote a kind of an arrangement where I do a lot of double stops, which greatly increases the workload and mental strain. And somehow or other, it came up that Russell was a pianist. And I played a recital last week, and I happened to bring, because I came down from Berkeley, and I happened to, the music all happened to be here, and I said, I was just thinking, "Russell, are you pianist? Might you be able, be willing to do this?" So, we haven't even rehearsed this, but we just kind of talked through some of the tempo changes. So, what you'll see here is the ability of two musicians who have never danced together before.
Let's dance, let's dance, let's do it.
And see how well this comes across for you.
We have a got for them.
Gabe is coming. Gabe is coming to town. So what? Who cares? Back on the ship, it seems such a snap. You tap a girl on the shoulder, she turn around, and she'd say, "I love you." At once unsure, it's not such a snap. You get the cold shoulder, the old runaround. You're left with no one but you. Gabe is coming. Gabe is coming to town. A town's a lonely town. When you pass through, and there is no one waiting there for you, then it's a lonely town. You wander up and down. The crowds rush by. A million fade. A million faces pass before your eye. Still, it's a lonely town unless there's love. A love that shining like a harbor light. You're lost in the night unless there's love. The world's an empty place. And every town's a lonely town. Unless there's love, a love that shining like a harbor light. You're lost in the night unless there's love. The world's an empty place. And every town's a lonely town.
...